Good evening. My name is Tanya Bowers and I would like to call the City of Pasco Planning Commission meeting to order. I would like to welcome all those in attendance this evening and ask you to join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America,
States of America.
to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. To begin tonight's meeting, I would like to ask that the clerk call the roll. Tanya Bowers?
Present.
Joseph Campos? Paul Mendez?
Present.
Ann Jordan? Ann? Abel Campos?
Present.
Isaac Myron?
Present.
Pam Rainsier? Jerry Cochran?
Present.
Madam Chair, there are six members and we do have a call. The Pasco Planning- If you can hear me, I'm sorry. Okay, I think that was Ann Jordan saying hello. The Planning Commission is an advisory board made up of volunteers appointed by the city council. The purpose of the Planning Commission is to provide recommendations to city council regarding changes to the city's comprehensive plan, land use updates, block grant allocations, and zoning code. The Planning Commission is tasked with considering the long-term growth and development of the community, the impact of land use decisions on community, livability, economic opportunity, housing affordability, public services, and the environment. I would like to remind the audience, tonight's proceedings are being broadcast live on the City of Pasco's Facebook page and on Charter Cable PSC Channel 191. And will be rebroadcast several times during the next month. The meeting is also being recorded so you can watch it on the City of Pasco's website, which is pasco-wa.gov. Click on the video on demand link and make your selection there. There are copies of the meeting agenda available on the back table. And how else, any other ways? On the website, so you may follow along with the meeting. At this time, I would like to ask that you silence your cell phones to prevent interruptions during our meeting. For those present this evening, when you are given the opportunity to address the commission, please come to the podium, speak clearly into the microphone or the microphone you have at home, and state your name and city of address for our records. Before we begin tonight's meeting, I need to remind the audience and the Planning Commission that Washington State law requires public meetings, like the one being held this evening, not only be fair, but also appear to be fair. In addition, Washington State law prohibits Planning Commission members from participating in discussions or decisions in which the member may have a direct interest or may be either benefited or harmed by the Planning Commission's decision. An objection to any Planning Commission member hearing any matter on tonight's agenda needs to be aired at this time or will be waived. First, are there any Planning Commission members who have a declaration at this time regarding any of the items on the agenda? Let the record show, there were no declarations. Second, is there anyone in the audience this evening who would like to object to any Planning Commission member hearing any of the items on the agenda? Let the record show that there were no declarations. We as a Planning Commission need and value your input. It helps us to understand the issues more clearly and to make recommendations to city council. Furthermore, in many cases, your input here at this Planning Commission meeting is your only opportunity to get your facts and opinions placed into the official record of the city council. The official record the city council will use to make its decision. I encourage you to take full advantage of this opportunity. The next item is the approval of the meeting minutes from the May 21st, 2020 meeting. These meeting minutes were mailed out to the commissioners ahead of time. I trust you had an opportunity to look at them. I would entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes.
Madam Chair, this is Jerry Cochran. I move to approve the minutes of May 21st, 2020. I would note that the meeting minutes actually refer to the approval of December 19th meeting minutes, which I don't think was the case, but I still approve the meeting, I'll move to approve the meeting minutes.
Thank you, Commissioner Cochran. Is this seconded by anyone with that correction?
Just Commissioner Campos, I second it.
Thank you, Commissioner A. Campos. It's been moved by Commissioner Cochran and seconded by Commissioner A. Campos. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? So let the record show that the meeting minutes were unanimously approved. We will now move to unfinished business. We actually have old business. Today, we have a code amendment regarding waterfront development district, MFCA 2019-001. And I would like to know, do we have any, we'll start with the discussion with any further clarifying comments from city staff.
Hey, good evening, Chairman, Chairwoman, and members of the Planning Commission. There is no further information on the proposed waterfront development district. Again, this is an initiative sponsored by the Port of Pasco and their efforts to develop Osprey Point to meet the intent of various planning goals and visioning efforts that they've gone through over the past decade or so. So there's no further information and would recommend the approval of the code amendment per the motion identified in the staff report today.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gonzalez. Do we have any questions, commissioners, or comments for Mr. Gonzalez? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, this is Jerry Cochran. I recommend, we move, I move the Planning Commission recommend to the Pasco City Council the creation of a new waterfront development district as contained in the June 18th, 2020 Planning Commission report.
And this is Ann Jordan, I'll second it. Terrific. So I would entertain a motion. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, say nay. Let the record show, it was moved by Commissioner Cochran, seconded by Commissioner Jordan, and the motion passed unanimously. All right. Next on our agenda is a series of public hearings. The first item is a block grant, which is, which is the 2020-21, sorry, 2021 Community Development Block Grant allocations, MFBGAP 2020-003. We will start our discussion with comments from the city staff.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Planning Commission. Just a brief summary of the CDVG block grant program for those that may not know about it. It was enacted in 1974 by Title I of the Housing and Community Development Act, also known as the Creston Gonzalez Act. And it rolled eight competitive grants for community development into one formula grant. The purpose of the CDVG entitlement grant is to preserve and develop viable urban communities by expanding economic opportunity, providing decent housing, and creating a sustaining, a suitable living environment. The grant requirements are that we have to have a five-year consolidated plan that was adopted in November of last year. An annual action plan supplement is prepared every year stating what the work plan is going to be for that fiscal year. And it also forms the basis for carrying out goals and objectives for that program year. At the end of that period, then we prepare a consolidated annual plan evaluation report that compares our performance to the actual annual plan, annual action plan. And during this whole process, citizen, or this whole process, citizens' participation is mandatory and encouraged. For 2020, 2024, our annual, our goals and objectives are exactly the same as they were for the last five-year plan for 2015 through 2019, and that is to increase and preserve affordable housing choices. It's to encourage community, neighborhood, and economic development, and also to provide assistance for homeless intervention and public services. How we do that is the City of Pasco can carry out these programs either in-house with staff or we can select a sub-recipient, which is a nonprofit agency or an other governmental agency that we can carry out these programs through, or we can hire a contractor through a competitive procurement process. There's also a special economic or community-based development organization, but there are none in this area. The selection criteria for the projects or activities that we select is that it has to meet a national objective of benefiting primarily low-to-moderate income households or persons in Pasco. The activity itself has to meet eligibility criteria that's defined in 24 CFR 570 and meet one of the goals or end objectives in the consolidated plan, and also meet local priority needs. The applicant needs to be qualified, bona fide nonprofit, or one that demonstrates capacity, and the project scope and budget is feasible. For those that don't know about Resolution 1969, it's the one that established the Planning Commission as the advisory board. And it also gave us our priority needs such as physical improvements and limited some things such as maintenance and equipment that is not allowable, and then puts limits on social services, which are already capped by HUD at 15% of the entitlement. So our estimated funds for 2021 was $700,000, and that was based on prior year's estimates. Allocated funds is our funds that are available to be reprogrammed. It's about $195,000. And then estimated program income from projects that do generate program income. We have two of them. One economic development project at PSK generates income. And then we have some rehab loan programs from years and years ago that also are repaid, and those funds are rolled over back into the same activity that created them. So for 2021, we have approximately a little over 1 million available for use. Then the proposals that we received for 2021, we received 16 proposals and they came to about 1.8 million, which leaves us with a deficit of about $800,000, which is very similar to what we had last year. So the requests in this letter are just summarized by project type. We have program administration, and that's where we carry out the projects. That's staff, overhead, everything that's required to, let contracts and monitor, public service activities, economic opportunities, affordable housing, public facility improvements, which includes buildings and parks, code enforcement, which is kind of lumped in with some housing goals, community infrastructure, which is more like curb gutter, street sidewalks. And then we have our Section 108 debt service that we need to make sure we set aside. So the percentage of the total requested is up there in red. You can see that the community infrastructure projects are a large amount, and the economic development are a large amount. The smaller portions are the housing, and some of the administrative are kind of in the in-between. So our goal is to have this public hearing and then the next public hearing on the 16th, where Planning Commission will take out or make recommendations for city council in July. And then we will put our annual action plan out for public comment for at least 30 days. And then when we receive our allocation from HUD, we'll update the numbers and submit it. So now we should go through the applications that were received. We have a number of ongoing applications that Mr. White's going to tell us about, and then we'll open it up to the sub-receipients that have applied.
And thank you, Madam Chair and Planning Commission. And similar to last year, I'll very quickly summarize the city applications for the public services. We have the first three positions, three recreational specialists that we partially fund in our administrative service department. Those are the Civic Center, Martin Luther King, and Senior Citizen Center Recreation Specialists. Those, of course, benefit low-to-moderate income families. We also have the Pasco Recreation Program Scholarship Fund, which was funded last year that provides scholarships to low-to-moderate income children that wish to take part in the recreational programs that the city uses. And the Code Enforcement Officer, who is limited to enforcement in Census Trax 201, 202, and 203 that we have historically funded as part of our public service activities. And unless there's questions on those submittals, I'll turn it over to.
May I, may I ask a question?
Certainly.
So can you just tell us which number, can you just tell us which number on the project activities requested you're speaking to?
The recreational specialists are 02, 03, and 04.
Great.
And the scholarship program for recreation is 06. And then the Code Enforcement Officer is number 13.
Great. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Maria Serra. I am the CIP manager, and I am here representing Public Works. We submitted an application for a project that I believe you've seen before. It is the Pasco Neighborhood Business District Improvements, which is identified in our CIP as the Lewis Street Corridor Project. We're going to go through a very quick overview of the project. You've seen it before. This project received funding from CDVG in previous calls. And the main purpose of the project is to revitalize downtown Pasco, the Lewis Street Corridor in the extent between Second Avenue and Fifth Avenue. We are proposing a phased approach, and we'll be able to see a map here real, real quickly. We're proposing a phased approach between Second Avenue and Fourth Avenue, which could allow to connect other two projects the city has invested in, which are the Lewis Street Overpass Project and the Peanuts Park Improvements. The proposed improvements along Lewis Street are widening of sidewalks, restriping overlay of the street, and mainly the focus is safety and enhancement of pedestrian access. We are expecting connectivity between, between the overpass and this park that is getting revitalized, and we expect a lot of pedestrian activity on Lewis Street gaining access to the businesses. It's okay. I'll continue without the slides. The total project cost is 1.9 million dollars. If we approach it in a phased manner, allowing it to construct the improvements between the overpass and Peanuts Park, so two full blocks of work between Second and Fourth, the cost is reduced to 1.375 million dollars. And we would be fully funded if we were awarded the final request we submitted for CDVG funds. Additional funding for this project comes from two previous awards from CDVG in 2019 and 2020. Our current request for $400,000. And then there's secure funding from REIT and Stormwater, which are local funds. There is a minimal additional money required from those funds that is expected to be shown in our next budget. And to make this project whole, the additional planned funding is coming from Overlay Fund, a local fund as well. And with that, I am here to answer any questions you may have on this project.
Thank you so much. May I ask a question now? So I remember the Lewis Street Overpass. Some of the money was held up because of a particular piece of legislation. I'm just wondering how that configures into the overall budget.
Okay, the Lewis Street Overpass Project has now been removed from the pause list as it's known. So the funding has been released, and currently the status of the project is finalizing the right-of-way phase, dealing with the railroad. So we are working diligently with the railroad, trying to finalize that phase and being able to obligate funds for that project and be able to go into construction. Construction is expected to begin later this year for that project. Peanuts Park on the other end of the project that we're talking about is in the bidding phase. It's been bid and it's awaiting award. So this project would connect right in between those other two, probably in a similar timeline.
And Madam Chair, just for some of the commissioners that may not have been present when a lot of this footwork happened, but for, I think, two full years, the city used an architect and design team to help with the public input for all of this design. So Peanuts Park, the street transitions, and the street sections, all of that design was preceded by outreach to the public, and we received a lot. And that's all reflective in both the pavilion design, the park design, and the streetscape that unfortunately, the slide seems to have disappeared. But we'll have that for the commission's information at next month's meeting.
Thank you very much for that background. So I am going to open this up since I don't see any other applicants who are present or on the line right now.
And Madam Chair, I did see Mr. Howland, if I remember, from the YMCA, I believe.
Mr. Howland. We would love to hear from you. Right now, John Funfar is coming out to assist us. So we can hear Mr. Howland.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, thank you for your patience.
Not a problem. Thanks, John, for unmuting me there. I want to thank the council and the city for once again entertaining our request for funding. The funding for the CDVG grant helps to support the operations at the YMCA's Martin Luther King Center. We've been running the program there for about 30-plus years, and the funding from CDVG is an essential part of our operations. Currently during the COVID-19 crisis, the program has been suspended. We are anxious to awaiting be able to reopen and welcome the kids back to the center to continue to give them that safe place to go. The funding from this actually helps us to make sure that center is open to the Kurtzman Park Neighborhood and to the children and families. In addition, we run the soccer program throughout the year for the kids, but the funding from CDVG makes sure that the doors to the center itself stay open. That includes the use of the computer lab, the game room, the gym, and the fitness facilities, and assists in the staffing to make sure that it's properly supervised. The soccer program itself operates independently, but the center gives those kids a safe place to go during the school week, after school, and in the summer months as well. Obviously, right now, we're unable to provide that, but we're looking forward to the day when we can. So I know many of the council members have heard me speak before, so I won't take a lot of time, but would be happy to answer any questions about the program that may exist.
Thank you very much, Mr. Howland. I know a lot of parents and families will be relieved when you are able to open your doors. I just had a question. I see YMCA, MLK Community Center Rec program listed, and then in a separate ask that came from the city, they were asking for funding for the MLK Community Center Recreation Specialist. So I'm hoping one of you can help to distinguish those separate asks.
Yeah, I can share that the city also has staff that work the program. So we do not operate into the evening hours. Our focus is on the young adults, the children. So we open after school until about 7:00 at night, and at that point, the city takes over and runs the indoor adult program. So the basketball leagues and soccer leagues. But city staff can give the opinion on that, but they are separate, but we work together in the same facilities.
Anything to add? Angela?
No, nothing to add.
No? Okay. Do, do young people not come after 7:00 PM?
We, we in the program, because most of the kids after 7:00 are going home to get ready for the next school day. And so our arrangement for years has been that the city takes over for the adults at that point. So we try to get all of our soccer hours when we're doing indoor soccer in before that, so the kids can get home and get a good night's rest. We try not to run that program late at night. During the indoor soccer timeframe, we will start indoor soccer as early as 7:00 AM on a Saturday, and we won't end until 8:00 or so. But during the school nights in particular, we want the kids to be able to go home before then.
Do you have any numbers of participants, say on average, in an evening?
Yeah, it really varies throughout the year. The peak time for us, where we will see, you know, from after school until early evening, we may see 150 kids that are in the building. But as the spring and summer numbers roll around, those numbers were reduced. We'll see a fewer number of kids coming in. But at peak time in January, 150 is not unreasonable to see. But at peak time in January, 150 is not unreasonable to see. And on a weekend, we will pack that place in with the adults and kids in soccer. A lot of that's going to remain to see what happens this year with the COVID-19 restrictions. When we wrapped up our soccer season last year, we were able to get these semifinals in. And we're only able to allow one adult per child to come in during that timeframe.
Thank you so much. And just for the city, what are numbers after, after 7:00? We don't have those.
I don't have those. I can find out, though.
Yeah, I'm curious.
I, I will say, from what we know is it's very popular. We get a lot of adults. It's the only facility in the Tri-Cities that is a public indoor soccer location. So in the past, a couple of YMCA board members would play on that league, and they knew the King Center well because it was the only place they could play. So I know it's, it gets to be very busy after we leave.
Terrific. Thank you. Thank you very much. Any questions, commissioners, for Mr. Howland, since we have him on the line? I'm not hearing anything. Thank you. Do we have any other applicants who've called in?
I do see Melissa Hess from CAC.
Terrific. Ms. Hess, you have the floor.
Good evening. Can everybody hear me okay?
Now we can.
Good. So I apologize in advance if I experienced any technical difficulties. I'm still trying to get the hang of this. My name is Melissa Hess. I'm the Operations Director of Community Action Connections. We have been in Benton and Franklin County since 1955, addressing the causes and conditions of poverty. One way that we do that is through our home weatherization program. And that helps us to improve, maintain, and increase the stock of affordable housing in our community. We're asking for funding to come alongside Matchmaker Funding that is sponsored through Washington State Department of Commerce. The Energy Matchmakers Program is a dollar-for-dollar match. But in order for community action agencies to access it, we have to have the funding alongside of it. So we're hoping that if awarded, we'd be able to serve approximately 15 households in the city of Pasco with that funding. And that's addressing health and safety issues, energy conservation, replacing furnaces, a whole plethora of things, just kind of depending on what the house needs itself. We also, probably the biggest part, is the customer education on energy conservation that we also want when we walk away from a house and it's finished, we want the resident to know how to properly use their new furnace and how to keep their utility bills down as much as possible. So yeah, if there's any questions, I'd love to answer them.
Thank you, Ms. Hess. Commissioners, any questions? No? Okay, thank you so much, Ms. Hess.
Thank you.
Do we have any other applicants?
I do recognize Donna Tracy from ARC.
Terrific. Ms. Tracy, you have the floor.
Good afternoon. Thank you so much for letting us apply again. And I'm new to this webinar, so I, I feel a little awkward, but I'm trying my best here. So the ARC of Tri-Cities has been awarded this grant before, and we're so graciously appreciative of it. And we use these funds to help provide therapeutic recreation services to our individuals with development disabilities in the Pasco community. We do it through a variety of services. We have a robust community, a growing community, and many of our families have children and adults with special needs. And the ARC works a lot with the city of Pasco. They, they've been gracious about letting us use their facilities, like their pools and different things to let us be able to provide services and support. Therapeutic REC offers personal care assistance, offers support that is not really in the nature of a lot of recreation programs, behavior autism support. And we're able to serve people and get them out of the community and help them be active members of the community. We have a partnership with Dala Ride that allows us to even transport. And we serve about, just in our summer camp alone, we serve about 55 kids. Of course, right now, it looks pretty skeptical if we'll serve that. But we are right now helping families that are in crisis. We have kids, our kids are not distance learners, and they are struggling. We have some families that kids are not eating, they're losing skills. And so we are providing limited service based on crisis management services right now to these families. So with these dollars, we're able to make sure our services are affordable. We do have dollars that come from the state through Developmentosseles Administration that help supplement. As we're able to have community dollars, we're able to be able to tap into those dollars to serve additional kids. So we really appreciate the support, and it's able to make sure that everybody can have a good time and be part of their community.
Thank you so much for that background information. I just had a question. Where do you normally hold your summer camp that you refer to?
You know, the Pasco School District gives us a building, so we get kind of rotated with. They donate that building at no cost for us. And they also send us referrals of kids they would like to see us serve. And then the city of Pasco is gracious about letting us use their pool, which we're really hoping happens this year. And we're keeping our fingers crossed, so that's how we were able to use facilities. So Ben Franklin Transit let us use the vans, the school lets us use the building, and it's a great partnership to make sure kids are all included.
Sounds like it. Commissioners, do we have any questions?
This is Commissioner Gompous. Yeah, just real question. I know that you do very well with kids and everyone else. Also, does any of this money requested go to adults, the adults program?
Oh, absolutely. Yes, absolutely. We have a lot of adults in Pasco who need support to get out there, living with their families. And then we are getting additional adult family homes and residential service providers in Pasco. So yes, we offer support to all those agencies and individuals. We serve about 100 adults in Pasco a year.
Wow. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
100 adults and how many children would you say in Pasco?
I would, Pasco, the kids programs, they're so intense. It almost takes one-on-one service to serve the kids. And so we're able to serve about 50 kids a summer.
Great. Okay, any more questions? Thank you so much for, for giving us some background and letting us speak with you. I am looking to my right. Do we have any more applicants who are on the line?
I did, I do see Brian Ace from the Boys and Girls Club.
Thank you. Mr. Ace, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. So my name is Brian Ace. I'm the Executive Director of Boys and Girls Club. It's been quite a few years since we presented to this commission with a proposal for funding, and I appreciate you considering it this year. You have two proposals in front of you, which make this a little confusing. The first is in support of teen services at our main branch. And the second is capital renovations to the main branch facility. The main branch has been a partnership between the city and Boys and Girls Club since the late 90s. It's an old elementary school, an old Emerson Elementary School that was acquired by the city rather than demolishing the building. So the building is owned by the city. The land is owned by the school district, and the Boys and Girls Club operates the facility in partnership with the city. It's a youth recreation program. The mission of clubs is to empower all young people, especially those who need us most, to reach their full potential. And that is the work we do at clubs. During COVID, this does look a little different, but we've been very proud of the, our use of that space and how it serves city residents during COVID, including robust meal service and delivery, homework assistance, and then appointment-based learning for teens as a way of getting them access to internet technology and tutors during that time. The proposals you see in front of you, the first is specifically for teen programs. This is a subset of the population we serve at our main branch. And as we anticipate over the next couple of years, the COVID crisis has greatly impacted our funding mechanism and process in which to provide those services. There is no charge for membership for teens in the club. And so they are able to come every day, and there is no charge for participation. That's very important to us to make sure that access is available to all youth. And so you do see a proposal there for teen services. The second proposal you see is a capital construction proposal specifically around ADA accessibility and safety. It is a program that focuses on the exterior of the building. That includes repainting of some blacktop spaces, safety and security lighting, and reengineering of the front steps to make those safer, both for children using those steps as well as an ADA accessible ramp, and then some sidewalk and crossing work to increase access for populations with, with accessibility challenges. And so those are the two proposals you see in front of you. Rather than continuing to speak at you, I would love just to answer any questions that you have either about Boys and Girls Club, generally, our main branch program at 801 North 18th Avenue in partnership with the city, or the two proposals that you see in front of you, one for services and the other for capital construction.
Terrific. Thank you so much, Mr. Ace. And your, the address of your main branch?
801 North 18th Avenue. So this is located right next to Edgar Brown Stadium on the west side. So it's on 18th Avenue, but close to the intersection with Sylvester.
Great. And the other location?
This is the, the location that we've got proposals in front of you. We used to have a second location in Pasco, but due, due safety concerns, we did close that. And so it's just one location in Pasco, in the city-owned building. One proposal for services, the other for capital.
Great. Thank you so much for clarifying that. I will open it up to my commissioners, fellow commissioners. Any questions for Mr. Ace on these two applications?
This is Ann Jordan. I have a question for Mr. Ace. So on the teen program, that's listed under homeless intervention. So this is helping at-risk teens also?
Very much, yes. So based on where the site is located, and you can see the actual block tracks listed in the application, it is very much designed, designed to serve youth that are facing challenges based on the neighborhood it's in, whether that be income, housing, or other factors. We don't discriminate for youth, so it's not specifically for homeless youth. But many of the youth we serve struggle with housing security. And I will say, based on the work we've done during COVID, that is only increasing. So during this COVID crisis, we have been doing direct delivery of meals, learning materials, and then virtual mentoring directly to approximately 300 homes each week, two doorsteps, and connecting with families. And looking at the data you have in front of you, based on most current data, I don't think that reflects the COVID crisis. And the needs in that targeted neighborhood are increasing during this COVID crisis.
Well, thank you for what you're doing, and thank you for explaining that.
I do not hear any other commissioners piping up right now. So I want to thank you so much, Mr. Ace, for being on the line and giving us some background.
Thank you very much for having me.
I look to our city staff. Any other applicants?
Yes, there are. Madam Chair, Gustavo Gutierrez Gomez. He'll, he'll be explaining several downtown projects.
Terrific. Mr. Gutierrez Gomez, you have the floor.
Yeah. Hi, how's everybody doing? My name is Gustavo Gutierrez Gomez. I actually now live in Pasco. I live at 6626 Chapel Hill Boulevard, apartment L201. So I'm a Pasconian, I guess, now. Thank you.
Great. Tell us about your applications.
Yes, the first one, and I think three of them are very important. But the first one, well, first I want to apologize because I do have them, I filled them out, and I have a couple of things that I had to run through my board. So I will bring those next time, which will be the new bylaws, the, the chart of the organization, and some of the maps that we do have. But I want to make sure I presented this today. So basically, the Pasco Specialty Kitchen, as you know it, you probably have it with you. We want to continue helping out managing the Pasco Specialty Kitchen. We have 22 clients, active clients, right now because of COVID-19. We only have 16. But if, if we get this, this money, we will be able to run the Pasco Specialty Kitchen next year. And we're going to increase our capacity because right now, we're only running around 28% of the capacity, 30%. So we will be able to go out and get more people to utilize this facility. And this one, this facility is actually aimed for low and moderate income people who have the desire to open their own business. So they're basically entrepreneurs. So I can tell you that since I took this job, I got, I hired new people, people who have more experience, very solid experience when it comes to money, budgeting, and administration. So right now, we're doing really good. It looks very solid. So we, we're offering technical assistance to the community in how to open their business. I'm, I'm offering technical assistance in how to develop their business plan and the marketing piece. And we're also offering assistance when it comes to the design because I also have someone who helps me. And we do, we design logos, and we design brochures and stuff for them. So those are the pieces that we offer to them. And we're also doing a better pricing point of entry. And this program is specifically for low and moderate income, and it's, it's a program to, to create new jobs in the community.
Terrific. So that is one of the applications under economic opportunities. And, and do you want to speak on the other two, or do you want to hold off till the next time?
I'll go to the other two. So the next one, really quick, is the facade improvement. We had this program before. It's not new. However, because I have a different team now, they're, they're all bilingual, bicultural. I believe that's what I'm asking for, more money. And, and we didn't have it this year, but for, for 2021, I believe with the team that I have now, we're going to do outreach and engagement in both languages, English and Spanish. And we will be able to follow through, basically not just for the application, but also for the technical assistance. And even, you know, we will try to help them out with the design. Of course, you know, I have a little bit of design in my, my background, but at the same time, like, we can, we can make sure that they understand the city code, you know, and the rules, you know, that, that they have to comply with. So that's why I, I believe that this is the time to put a little more money in this one than the years before, because this time I want to get at least, you know, you know, eight to nine projects. I think that's where I was talking. We doubled basically the projects for last time, what we have. So that's what we're aiming for. And the last one, the last one.
Can I ask you a question about that? Sorry. So the one you're referring to right now is the one about the facade improvement program?
Yes.
Great. Okay, thank you for clarifying that. Please proceed.
Yes, it's a facade. It's just, we don't know because it, it's, it's a set-up percentage that the city helps with. It's not the full amount. So I don't know how many are going to come out because the price will change depending on the facade. So that's what I'll, I'll say. I put a, you know, I, I was thinking maybe eight. I don't know. But before, they had done one, two, or three. I think the last one was, was three of them. So we're aiming to hopefully help more than three. But yeah, that's the one I was referring. And the last one, this one is very important. It's a new program. I don't think we had it before. And the reason why I want to use this one is because I moved here in November last year, October, November, and I realized November, December, January, even February, maybe even here in March, there's, the downtown is dead when it comes to quinceañeras and a lot of these culturally specific events that families have. So I think they'll wait for the summer. And even though we have COVID-19, you know, after, and I know a lot of them are suffering, but what I'm trying to say, as soon as then we start reopening in the different phases, winter is going to come again, and they still not going to be able to sell anything. So they will run the risk of, of course, losing more money. So I'm anticipating for 2021 to have some type of grant that we can give $10,000 for each business, and we will be able to help, you know, 15 of them. So this is a new program I'm asking. And, and the reason why I wanted to be a grant is because it is a lot harder to help some of these people because... Because, like I said, on those months, they don't make any money. There's no income for them. So I, I'd rather help the ones that they're more in need. Uh, that's, that's the way. And of course, the, the idea is that they will keep the jobs and hopefully they will hire at, you know, one or two more people when, you know, throughout the year. So will we create, will we not only keeping them in downtown, but we will also hopefully uh help them to create new jobs through our technical assistance. And that's all I have.
Thank you so much. Do any of the commissioners have questions for Mr. Gutierrez Gomez?
This is Commissioner Gompf. Yeah, thank you for the information. Just out of curiosity, how many businesses do we have downtown?
We have, let me, I have my rooster right here. We have, uh, we counted forty-three last time, uh, forty-one, we counted they were Latino. Uh, but right now, seven of them closed down, so we're talking about thirty-three, thirty-four of the, of the Latino community. Seven closed down, so let's say thirty-four.
So this grant would roughly help, help about half of them?
Only half of them, yes. Only the one, you know, uh, only half of them. The idea is to help the ones that are most in need. Uh, the, usually the ones that suffer the most are the boutiques. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other commissioners have questions? Okay, thank you so much, Mr. Gutierrez Gomez.
Thank you.
I am looking over to city staff to see if we have any more applicants on the line.
I, I don't recognize any, uh, Madam Chair, unless um, anybody wants to speak again.
Please speak and if there are any other applicants for the CDBG loans. I, looks like there, looks like there aren't. All right, so um, the requests have been presented. I'm going to go to the commissioners once again to ask if you have any other questions or comments um for city staff. If not, we can go into a discussion.
Madam Chair, I may just want to add, um, traditionally that, well, actually, by statute, the Planning Commission holds two public hearings on this. So uh, tonight, there is no action expected of the commission. Uh, certainly, discussion is welcome, but this item, th- this uh subject will return in July for deliberations and a recommendation.
Thank you for that. Um, and one question I had, do we have in here what we, what we allocated last year?
No, not in this packet. We can provide that, though. That would be helpful.
That would, that would be very helpful. Because it's actually at the, mm, at the next meeting, we'll close the public hearing. Will we actually vote them? Yeah, we'll vote after that meeting, so um, I would appreciate that. Any other comments amongst commissioners? Okay, and uh, I am not gonna be closing this public hearing because we are gonna be continuing it at the January meeting. July, thank you. I'm getting all my J months confused. All right, so with that, we will be moving along to our next item. And uh, I am now going to go to the next item on our agenda, which is a comprehensive plan amendment regarding the urban growth area, MF number CPA twenty twenty zero zero one. And we will start our discussion with comments from city.
Go back one.
Okay. Sorry about that, Jacob. Man. Wait, so what am I doing now? Oh, we got more home!
The next item, yeah.
Silly me. Forgive me. I was just so excited. Um, all right, let me go back one. And we are doing another block grant. This block grant is regarding the twenty twenty-one home fund allocations, MF number BGAP twenty twenty zero zero four. And with that, I will ask for any comments Ms. Pittman has for us.
Okay, the cities of Pasco, Kennewick, and Richland have joined together to form a consortium. Um, the Tri-Cities Home Consortium, as an entitlement, receives an en- receives an entitlement every year, and that's distributed amongst the three cities. And there's a certain set aside for choo-to funds. So for twenty twenty-one, we estimate um entitlement funds to be, I think it was four hundred and eighty-seven thousand. So the city's share would be a hundred and sixty-three thousand, and then we have estimated program income of a hundred thousand. So that gives us about two hundred and sixty-three thousand for projects. Um, we're proposing to continue our down payment assistance program. We estimate we should get about twenty-five down payment assistance loans from that block of funds.
Thank you so much for that. Um, commissioners, I would ask if you have any questions or comments for Ms. Pittman? Okay, um, I would just like to say, I know this is, uh, the home funds are really, really important here in the, in Pasco, but also in the tri-cities. So I am going to, uh, do I read the recommendation? What do you need from me?
Similar to the previous item, Madam Chair, this uh also will c- return to the commission in July for an official uh recommendation.
All right, so with that, um, we will hold off on considering the recommendation until the July meeting. All right, now I'm gonna press rewind and go to the comprehensive plan amendment for the urban growth area, MF number CPA twenty twenty zero zero one. I believe we are gonna hear from Mr. Gonzalez.
Good evening, uh, members of the Planning Commission. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to speak here. Again, uh, this is a update on the urban growth area. Uh, so the staff report provided to the Planning Commission includes the background information on the urban growth area, uh, the responsibility to the Growth Management Act, and their relationship with the ongoing comprehensive planning efforts that we've been conducting here at the city of Pasco. Uh, just uh, as a quick uh info, uh, information, staff did have a lengthy discussion and presentation with the Pasco City Council at the June eighth workshop. Um, at that workshop, we were able to provide a lot of information of what went into uh the delineation of all of the urban growth area expansion proposals, including the capital facilities cost for uh the third alternative. So tonight's presentation will summarize a, a lot of what we've already heard over the past few months here at the Planning Commission, uh, starting with, um, I believe is, do I have? Here's the, uh, obviously, the, the meetings that we've had on the urban growth area or comprehensive plan, twenty-two meetings uh since twenty eighteen. And here's a statement that I wanted to read because I believe it's, it's critically important and it will make uh a few appearances throughout the rest of actually tonight's agenda items. Um, and it's from the Washington State Department of Commerce. And it reads, "Urban growth areas are areas where growth and higher densities are expected, and that can be supported by cost-efficient urban services by directing growth into urban areas. Cities and counties can also protect critical areas and conserve natural resource lands, farms, forests, and maintain the character of the rural lands." That is the intent of the Growth Management Act. And I think uh we'll come back to this, obviously, through the rest of the presentations tonight. Rick, Rick, do I have access up here? Okay, um, so uh, urban growth areas and urban services, some more information. Specifically, the one on the bottom, "A pattern of more intensive rural development as provided in the RCWs is not urban growth." And I think this will become, uh, like everything else that we'll speak about today, very interrelated between all the topics that we discussed today. The difference and the very important difference to make between urban development and non-urban development and how that fits into the growth here uh in the city of Pasco. Some more information about managing urban growth areas, creating compact people-oriented living and working places is meant to protect environmentally sensitive areas, et cetera. Again, I put these in here because I, I think it's important for us to remember what it is we're supposed to be doing, our responsibilities as a jurisdiction, um, and the impacts that it has, not only on the community and those that choose or uh, or can't live here, but also the uh expensive infrastructure costs that go ahead, that go along with developing a city growing as fast as Pasco is. Um, well, uh, here's the uh slide that I think we've seen a few times. Uh, a sixty percent increase is expected. Uh, in the city of Pasco, between now and the year twenty thirty-eight, we've added forty-five thousand residents since the year two thousand. Um, that growth of roughly forty-eight thousand or so people equates to about fifteen thousand or so housing units based on today's average household size. The average household size is something we'll come back to later on in the next item. So obviously, this explains why the need for an expansion is, is something that we pursued, are pursuing. A brief timeline, everything in gray is obviously what we've been through. The draft environmental impact statement for the comprehensive plan was released on May fifteenth. Uh, the, we are uh seeking tonight a recommendation from the Planning Commission on the urban growth area. Uh, and then we will do some more refinement to this before going back to the uh Pasco City Council, which would make a resolution for us to actually submit an application to Franklin County. Now, the, at the county level, the Planning Commission at Franklin County and eventually the Franklin County Board of Commissioners will have the final authority for the yes or no on the urban growth area expansion. So that would be the action that uh we're leading up to with this process today and ongoing. So as you all know, we've talked a lot about the land capacity analysis. This was a uh report, I'm sorry, this was a task that was uh recommended not only by the Washington State Department of Commerce, but also Franklin County Planning Staff as well. And what the land capacity allowed us to do, what the land capacity analysis allowed us to do was to take a look at Pasco's existing vacant and underutilized uh residential parcels and some commercial because we do allow residential in some commercial zoning districts. And to identify how much land do we actually have so that we can accommodate as much of that growth within the existing UGA and city limits prior to expanding the uh expansion area. Um, so we, we try to be really careful and delicate with this because you don't just want to overlay and say the parcel's vacant, therefore you can develop twenty-two units. Uh, we kept today's zoning standards, um, and then uh made sure that uh we stayed away from areas that we knew weren't, they're just not feasible. I think uh, for those that are familiar with the way the city lays out, obviously, central Pasco, uh, even in the land capacity analysis, although it's older, did not have as much vacancy or underutilized as one might, one might expect. The majority of the underutilized and vacant parcels were located in the Riverview area, south of Interstate one eighty-two, west of Highway three ninety-five. So the results of that land capacity analysis, as you all know, indicated that Pasco did not have sufficient land in our UGA to accommodate the forty-eight thousand residents. In fact, we had enough room for about sixty-three percent. And I want to point that out because this wa, this work wasn't conducted. It wasn't a part of the process back in twenty eighteen for the delineation of alternative number two. And it's a primary reason why we were able to decrease the UGA uh expansion in itself was by taking a look at what we have today to accommodate growth before uh reaching out elsewhere into uh north of the existing boundary. So again, out of the forty thousand or so residents that are expected to call Pasco home within the next eighteen to nineteen years, we have current capacity to accommodate roughly sixty-three percent of those. The remaining eighteen thousand or so residents, we uh identify would have to uh, but dwelling units would need to be serviced outside of the existing UGA, which uh equals the thirty-five hundred acres. So here is a comparison of the uh alternatives. Specifically, you'll see number three, that's in that yellow color. Um, you'll see alternative number two, which is the back layer you'll see in the pink. And the existing UGA is identified within the boundary of uh the purple, the purple line. So the purple line is our existing UGA. The yellow shade was, is what was necessary for alternative number three. And the pink, which was, was uh identified in twenty eighteen, is alternative number two. So a thirty-five hundred acre or so expansion, that's almost a thirty percent decrease from alternative number two. And we're able to do that by a few things. One, number one, was the land capacity analysis. The second uh item that we're able to do was change the mix of land uses in the urban growth area. And I wonder, I want to point out that while the urban growth area is impacted by the land uses associated with the future land use map of the comprehensive plan, this item is on the boundary itself. So uh, we'll talk more about the specific land uses at the next item and now, and really throughout the rest of the summer. Another key part that has been pointed out over the past few years was the increasing imbalance in Pasco's jobs-to-household ratio. So the jobs-to-household ratio is basically a measurement that indicates um plainly, one household should have, have at least one job. And what we know in Pasco is that that's not the case. A lot of the residents in Pasco are dependent on jobs that aren't located in Pasco. In fact, we uh not only can identify that by the number of jobs within Franklin County versus the housing units, occupied housing units in Pasco, but travel data actually indicates and reaffirms this as well. Um, twenty sixteen uh data from the uh census uh indicates that roughly sixty percent of residents that live in Pasco leave Pasco for work. Twenty-six, twenty-six percent of those trips actually use Interstate one eighty-two to cross into Richland and into Baton County. And I, I think that's important. It, it's something that maybe is often overlooked. But that's how we begin to shift the land use transportation conversation and why identifying all of the impacts at once uh allows us to see what the long-term uh potential may be for mitigating potential congestion on our local network, uh, specifically on Interstate one eighty-two, three ninety-five, Highway twelve, et cetera. Uh, as well, we uh included enough industrial capacity for us to justify to the Washington State Department of Commerce and others that this isn't a land grab. That is not the purpose or the intent of the urban growth area expansion. The intent of it is to identify what we need to sufficiently accommodate enough growth to get us to the year twenty thirty-eight. So this is a little bit of detail about the land uses that we associate, identified in the future land use area. So yellow is the low density, uh, the darker shades you get to the orange uh as medium. And that light colored is high-density residential. You'll see that we've tried to allocate those um along a uh, along, what you'll see on the um, an item coming up later on tonight would be a future street classification system. We need additional densities, but we also need them to plan correctly along arterials that can appropriately accommodate residences and their travel patterns. You'll also see uh the red, which is the, which is the commercial allocations in the urban growth area. This points back directly to what we spoke about uh in the prior slide, which was the jobs-to-household balance in Pasco is getting to a level where uh it, it not only uh requires folks to leave the city of Pasco for work, but it does have an impact, obviously, on our transportation system. And the long-term consequences of that may be what happens if jobs that exist elsewhere are no longer there and we're left here with residents in the city of Pasco with not as much opportunity for employment. On the industrial side, so this is closer to three ninety-five, you'll see the Port of Pasco and the uh, uh, roughly six hundred and twenty-five acres that they've identified to be a huge component of their future Ryman Center. The Ryman Center is a, an area that the Port of Pasco visions to house up to one thousand jobs, heavy industrial, heavy manufacturing, uh, to provide uh obviously plenty of employment opportunity, additional employment opportunity for not only Pasco, but obviously the region. And uh, I want to, also wanted to point out uh on the slide that you see on the right side, that's within our existing urban growth area. This was a recent purchase of a little bit over a hundred and eighty acres by the Confederated Tribes of the Coveville Reservation. And uh, I, I do want to emphasize here that while it won't be seen in the maps you see today, uh, prior to any uh future maps that are finalized or the environmental impact statement for the comprehensive plan, we will see a new land use identified for this specific area. Currently, it's identified as industrial. We will be allocating a- Currently it's identified as industrial, we will be allocating a specific land use to accommodate um. The, the Culver reservations efforts there, you'll also see on the left side, I didn't wanna skip over it, was about roughly thirty-nine to forty acres located on Capitol Avenue. Uh, there's utilities along Capitol Avenue and uh, we wanted to also include uh, a piece of that land, a larger area was identified for alternative number two. But again, throughout the land capacity analysis, we did have to do some reductions, um, but we didn't wanna lose all of it. And we believe that we can justify adding uh, what's been proposed, not only on the residential and commercial side, but obviously in the industrial side. Here's a comparison between alternative number two and alternative number threes, uh, if you remember, alternative one was no, no expansion. So this is a table, the, the maps are important, but I wanted to focus more on the numbers here of the percent of land use by expansion area. So in alternative number two, there was a heavy emphasis on low density residential, we uh, received quite a bit of comment. Uh, not only through the planning commission in twenty eighteen, but also by the city council. About why uh, the need for so uh, so much low density residential. So you can see that we decreased it, but by decreasing it, we, it also allowed us to increase medium and higher density residential land uses. And you'll see why that comes into play in the next presentation. Um, the commercial allocations were significantly uh, increased to accommodate employment opportunities in the city of Pasco. For folks that live here, uh, the airport reserve uh, by the Port of Pasco remains the same. And again, a slight, or uh, a little bit of an increase on the industrial lands as well, again, this is taken as a total of the expansion area. Uh, so that's how the land uses break down per expansion area, again, alternative number three was identified through the land capacity analysis. Um, and utilizing infill and redevelopment opportunities with a higher mix variety of land uses for the urban growth area. So uh, this is a part that obviously is a requirement uh, by the Growth Management Act and the RCWs and that's identifying how we're actually gonna pay for this. Um, so the capital facilities plan for the expanded UGA identified that for the first five, six years. Of growth that we expect in the UGA, there'd be a total cost of an uh, approximately a hundred and fourteen million dollars. And I wanna identify that these are just capital facilities, so this doesn't sco- include schools, police stations, fire departments. Parks, et cetera, this is just streets, sewer, water, a hundred and fourteen million dollars to keep our level of service. Um, at the required levels, um, on the right side, you'll see the variety of, of funding sources. Uh, this is sort of a living document, the capital facilities plan for the urban growth area did take the existing. City council approved, capital improvement program and the tip, along with the sewer and water plans that have been uh, conducted over the past few years. Those all feed into the capital facilities plan for the UGA, however, this is more of a living document that will constantly need to be. Amended to uh, reflect um, ongoing forecasted needs. I know this is a uh, thi- this is a, obviously a number that we, I don't know if we shared the specific numbers before, so if there's any questions on this, I'd be happy to answer them. Or, or, or reply to them at a, at a later time for the planning commission.
So that number, does that change with uh, option one, two, or three?
I, I would expect uh, for options number two and number three, it, it, it'd be roughly the same, but keep in mind on number two. There was a lower density associated with it, so the efficiency of utilities becomes a, a little bit more questionable at that point. With this hundred and fourteen million, we're able to service more residents, more employment with less infrastructure.
Because it won't be spread quite as far?
Yes.
Thank you.
Oh, although keep in mind, this is just the first six years where you'd see that number really jump up is over the ten, fifteen, twenty-year timeframe.
Okay, commissioners, I'm not hearing anyone pipe up. Right now with questions. Can you go back to the map for one second? Yeah, so I'm noticing in option three is on the right, option two is on the left. Um, so for three. Uh, I'm noticing that the little corner that is on the, budding the Columbia River. Seems like a, a wedge of it has been taken out, the upper left-hand corner.
You're talking on the northeast side, I'm sorry, the northwest side up here?
Yeah, right there.
Yeah.
And uh, I was just curious, why?
Yeah, absolutely.
Looks like there's still more stuff, um, when you go to the further right of your map that was added in. On option three.
No, no, number three was, was moved further to the south and then kind of leveled out as it continued east, it might just be the, the scale or the, the way the uh. They're not evenly placed on this map due to the scales of, of the map, but to answer that question. Um, similar to the uh, leaving out some of the proposed uh, identified industrial expansion that uh, property owners wanted to be included in number two. Well, the same exists for alternative number two and three on the residential side. Uh, we did the land capacity analysis and although that's a simple mathematical exercise. Um, I, I think we should also keep in mind that this Pasco city council and efforts through the planning commission. And also through economic development efforts with uh, the Port of Pasco and Franklin County. We've all identified as redevelopment uh, as a, as a goal, an infill as a goal. So if we're able to succeed in bringing more housing uh, to the downtown area. The code amendment that the planning commission just approved about the Port of Pasco's waterfront development district has a, has a really exciting residential component. Uh, the units going up on twentieth and A Street along the Columbia River, more residential, so if we're able to be successful in all of our efforts. Then that in itself take cares of, takes care of us having to expand further and further north into agricultural rural landscapes. Another uh, concern uh, that we have um, with uh, the, the residential land, especially that adjacent to the Columbia River. Is, it is adjacent to the Columbia River, so number one, you're gonna be complying with uh, the state manag- the state shoreline. Act, the uh, city of Pasco's own shoreline management program. And uh, as we are continuing to grow and develop, we're seeing increasingly more. Uh, more information focused through the uh, I guess through public comments on our CIPAs. So the State Environmental Protection Act requires CIPAs on majority of, of our planning projects and proposals. And so when we see small or big residential uh, subdivisions being planned in Pasco. The Department of Archaeology and Historic Preservation is commenting. And what they're asking our uh, our builders to do is to comply with um, the uh, conducting a uh, I, I. Rick, I don't, the specific term.
Uh, it's an undiscovered, it's a discovery protocol for unanticipated discovery of artifacts, et cetera. And as you get along the shoreline, that becomes increasingly likely.
And, and so I, I, I wanted to add that, it wasn't just left out, just because you leave it out, that's not an appropriate response and it's not the exercise that took place. We took into account the fact that that would be cost of your land to develop, that cost is gonna be borne by somebody. I, I'm sorry, I don't know if there's any more questions on this specific.
That was it for me, anyone else, commissioners? All right, I'm sorry, please continue.
Uh, yeah, again, back to the uh, goals of the Growth Management Act, um. You, you'll see a, a table here in the draft environmental impact statement, um, goes through these in more detail. Uh, but you'll see the list of goals on the left with alternatives one, two, and three, and the idea for us. Through the planning commission eventually through the Pasco city council is to select an alternative, um, an expansion alternative that best meets all of these criteria. Uh, so concentrating urban growth, reducing urban sprawl, transportation mitigation with multimodal opportunities. Housing for all income levels of the city, economic development, open space, recreation preservation, consu- conservation of the environment. Planning for public civi- public facilities and services, along with preservation of historic properties, cultural, historic preservation. So when we balance all three alternatives, specifically two and three, which one do we believe has the uh, the most appropriate? Opportunity to meet these intent, uh, this intent of the Growth Management Act. So again, uh, this is a comparison of all three uh, urban growth area alternatives. And we did provide an updated motion to the planning commission for you to consider for tonight. Uh, the step would be uh, based on the decision the planning commission makes tonight would be to take a little bit more time as staff. And do some coordination with the Washington State Department of Ecology and also our consulting team to ensure that we're processing through this appropriately. With that uh, presentation is concluded, be happy to answer any questions from the planning commission, thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Gonzalez, uh, any questions from the commission? All right, um, with that. Uh, I am going to ask any discussion? Um, I actually did have some questions, but they were regarding some of the letters that were written. Would this be the time to ask you about that?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, great, so we did get a lot of comments on this obviously, which shows. How important our uh, public process is. Um, I'm noticing in the letter from Halverson Northwest dated June tenth, twenty twenty. Um. It states that um, the planning commission and city, this is the fourth paragraph on the second page. Um, as a legal matter should have held hearings on the comprehensive plan amendment. Uh, should not have held hearings on the comprehensive plan amendment, alternative three until the comment period on the DEIS had expired. Uh, so I was, is this the case, did the DEIS not expire?
Well, Mr. Gonzalez can answer that, but the comment period expired on six fifteen, so Monday, six fifteen.
So are we in violation of this, or this accusation?
I, I, I'm not sure I understand the, the point that the letter author is making, he is though, uh, listed on the speaker list, maybe he can clarify.
Okay, uh. All right, so that was my question, maybe what I'll do is I'll save that. Um, for when um, we open up to the list of speakers who we have today. And uh, those are my questions, anything else from other commissioners? No, okay, thank you so much, and uh, what we're going to do now is we are going to open. The public hearing, so I was given a list of individuals who are on the line. Um, who are calling in, I would just say any individuals who wish to speak on this particular item, now is the time to come forward and speak. Please state your name and address for the record, so with that, Mr. White. I believe what I will do is uh, start with Caleb Stromstad. I don't know if he's interested in speaking or if just all the individuals are on that list.
That Caleb's here, um, it was, if it's all right, um, we'd like to allow Mark Fickers to go first for Maru.
Great, thank you so much, welcome, Mr. Fickers, you have the floor. Ah, and I.
He's, he's on his own login, you're gonna have to give him the mic.
I just wanna say, um, let's try and keep these. Yeah, hold on one second.
Chairman, okay.
Let's just hold on, I just wanna say, let's try and um, time these to three minutes, okay, we appreciate. Uh, we appreciate your uh, your contributions, thank you so much, Mr. Fickers, please.
All right, madam, uh, chairman, uh, commission members, my name is Mark Fickers, I'm a partner in the Halverson Northwest Law Firm. I'm a real estate and land use attorney from Yakima, uh, it will be hard to limit it to three minutes, again, I would ask, I have two particular matters. To speak to, I'm representing uh, Mr. Fred Oberding uh, on one of the matters, uh, it's, it's a commercial designation on his property. And Big Sky developers, and I think I can answer some of your questions, madam chairman, uh, on why the property in the north. West corner was omitted, but what I'd like to start with is. Let me answer your question on my objection to the hearings, this is the, an important hearing, this is sort of the beginning of the end of the process. The draft environmental impact statement was published on May fifteenth, and this is the first planning commission hearing. After alternative three has been completely developed, um, my, my objection. Uh, is just to basically, I don't wanna spend too much time on legal matters, but I just wanna preserve a legal objection that. The planning commission and the city should not have locked in to alternative three before the comment period was, had even expired. By the way, I submitted a June tenth letter and I appreciate you having the opportunity to read it and I certainly invite. Uh, all commission members to read it, I'll try not to, to repeat myself too much, so. So the, um, it's basically a legal argument, I think it was a procedural defect, does it undo the whole process, probably not. And assuming the commission members are going to listen to me and Mr. Stromstad and my clients, I think it can probably be cured. Because I think the two matters I'm gonna speak to are rela- relatively non-controversial, uh, why are we here? We're here, uh, again, to choose where Pasco's gonna develop in the next twenty years. State law requires an early and continuous public participation process. And when changes to the urban growth area boundary happen, there's usually an obligation to notify owners particularly affected. And madam chairman, you've noted, you know, there's been a change in the map between alternative two and alternative three. And some of those property owners that were left out wanna be in, um, and I'm, I'm gonna speak to one of those later on, that's the Kohler property. But let's stick to the Oberding property, um, I wanna make sure that the planning commission understands that it's, it's job. It's the initial decision maker, it's your job to make a recommendation to council, Jacobs uh, properly explain the process. But it's not your job to pick alternative one, two, or three, this isn't let's make a deal, it's your job, you can make changes to any alternative. And I'm gonna make it easy for you because I, I agree with Mr. Gonzalez, that alternative three is probably the best proposal. That meets most of the requirements of the law, but I'm gonna be advocating for two small changes, the first one is I think the Oberding, there's. Fred Oberding owns eighty acres of property just north of Burns Road, you have the map, you have the letter, and for some reason. Uh, the city is recommending thirty-eight, thirty acres or so of it be designated commercial, there's no commercial property in the area. It's in the middle of a residential neighborhood, nobody's asked for it, it's next to your high school site, it is an awful area to designate commercial. Now, you know, I don't know how it got there, um, and I don't need to argue with Mr. Gonzalez now. But what I'm asking the planning commission to do, and it won't slow up your process at all, is simply to remove that commercial designation. And go back to low density residential, um, you're gonna hear from a couple of people with Mr. Stromstad, it'll show, there's no demand for it. Uh, again, it's in the middle of a residential neighborhood, I think Randy Mullen that testified at the last hearing. Said there's lots of commercial property along Road sixty-eight that's, has the infrastructure, Burns Road doesn't even go through to Road sixty-eight. So uh, uh, again, I, I'm sort of, I couldn't find anything in the record to show how thirty acres. In the middle of a residential neighborhood was chosen for commercial development. And uh, so uh, uh, again, what I'd be asking the commission for is to instruct staff. In preparing future resolutions or findings to include one that deletes the commercial designation on the Oberding property, I would hope. I understand this planning commission may not be making a decision tonight, but I think it should instruct staff, i.e. Mr. Gonzalez. To make sure removal of the commercial designation is included as an alternative when it does get around to making a decision. Um, so. Switching gears, uh, to my second matter that you asked a couple of questions on, madam chairman, going to the Kohler property. Uh, again, I represent Big Sky developers on this matter, uh, the property is under contract. The owner, Deborah Kohler, owns a hundred and four acres right where you've noticed in the northwest corner by the river. She hasn't been able to farm it economically, it doesn't have good soil, um, and it's prime residential property overlooking the river. That could meet some of the housing needs, and what my client has proposed to the city. Um, is to extend sewer and water up Dent Road that would allow the infill development that Jacob Gonzalez has asked for. This, again, the Kohler property was a casualty of the reduction from alternative two to Article Three. And again, I believe the planning commission has the power to simply re-include it, uh, if that's a word. Um, it should be included because, you know, the owner developer, it's ready for development now. Part of, uh, the comments that I assume the commission's gonna be hearing, some people don't wanna be in the urban growth area. They wanna farm. Some property should be ready to be developed, and this is one of those properties where the owner and the infrastructure is already there. There's already urban-level development immediately to the south, uh, and even a little bit to the north. I believe it meets the GMA goals. And, uh, again, this could be a really nice infill development, uh, that would not throw the city's calculations out of whack. Uh, so again, um, I'm happy to answer questions, but, um, what we would like the planning commission to do on the Kohler property is, again, include an alternative. The planning commission, you have the power to make minor modifications, and this modification is clearly within the scope of what's been evaluated in your environmental review, i.e., this was in alternative two. It's not in alternative three, and adding back in a hundred and four acres where there's sewer and water that will serve not only the hundred and four acres being added, but there's three hundred and twenty right next to it that sewer and water could serve. If you don't do this, it's gonna develop in the county at lower densities with wells and private septic systems, which are less environmentally sound. So I'll end with that, but I would, I would appreciate at the end of the meeting if planning's commission would ask staff, ask Mr. Gonzalez to include, uh, uh, again, an alternative that would bring the Kohler property back into the proposed urban growth area boundary. And with that, I'll end. I know Mr. Stromstad and some of our clients are present, uh, down in Pasco, and I apologize not being able to be there, uh, tonight. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you so much, Mr. Fickers. Um, it would be really helpful to me if I could, if someone could point on the map to where these properties are that, uh, these, um, people are referring to. Is that something we are able to do?
This is Caleb Stromstad.
Caleb, can you help me out?
That's the map right there, Jacob. The two, the two comparison ones, alternative one and number two would be the best. Or two and three, I'm sorry, that shows the two maps side by side. I mean-
Yeah.
There we go.
Okay, so I don't know where the Kohler and the Oberding.
Okay, Oberding, Madam Chair, Oberding is right here. You see the red?
Yeah.
Uh, now, uh, Kohler, I'm not sure exactly where, but it's roughly in that area you identified with your question a little while ago.
If you go to alternative three, it's that chunk that's missing between the Columbia River and the northwest corner of the urban growth boundary in alternative three.
Got you. Thank you. That's, that is really helpful. Uh, all right. Um, I don't hear any of my fellow commissioners piping up, so-
Madam Chair, this is Jerry Cochran.
Oh, please, Commissioner Cochran. Thank you.
Hey, I just, um, I was gonna ask Mr. Fixey if he could address your original question, which was in the letter, it stated that the, he believes the comment period was violated, and I'd like him to address that.
Mr. Cochran, this is Mark Fickers again. I, I, I thought I did, but basically, my objection, uh, with regard to the changes is we, we shouldn't have been having planning commission hearings on an alternative that, until the comment period under CIPA had expired. And that, that didn't occur until, uh, i- i- is Mr. White noted and Jacob noted until June fifteenth. So the, the alternative three wasn't published and fully developed until May fifteenth, and there's a thirty-day comment period. Normally, CIPA is required to be done upfront. Again, uh, I think there's an, you, this hearing is, we appreciate giving the opportunity to speak, but there was hearings talking about alternative three, and clearly Jacob had already made up his mind to go with alternative three long before the draft D I S was ever published. So I was preserving an argument in case of legal appeals. I hope those won't be necessary. Does that accept, uh, the unanimous?
That helps. Thank you, Mr. Fickers. Anything else? Commissioner Cochran?
I just wondered if staff had any response to that or?
No.
My, my understanding is we've been, we've been having multiple hearings, but this hearing is in compliance with the thirty-day period, and we're having a final hearing. And so, um, more discussion seems better, and so I'm just curious. I, and I don't know the laws or the details of laws or the interpretation, and that's probably up to a court. But I'm just curious why I, I, I'm having a hard time concluding that there's a violation, and I'm just trying to clarify.
N- no, thank you, Commissioner Cochran. Uh, it's a unique enough question that we have asked for guidance from the Department of Ecology, their CIPA Division, uh, uh, for. Um, our contact was unsure. Therefore, it went to Lacey, and we thought we would have an answer, uh, I think yesterday, actually, afternoon. Uh, we still don't have an answer, but it's, um, not staff's opinion that a violation has occurred.
Thank you.
Okay, not hearing any other commissioners pipe up. I believe we are going to go to the next name on the list I have. Caleb Stromstad, unless you want to defer to anyone else on the list first?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chairman. Caleb Stromstad here, twenty-seven oh five San Andrews Loop in Pasco. I'm here representing Big Sky Developers, specifically with the UGA item that we're talking about right now. Um, uh, city staff is, is working incredibly hard with their consultants and done a lot of legwork to get to this point. And there's a lot of vested interest in the alternative three, and that's, and that can be, um, reasonably understood. Um, what we're asking planning commission to do is, is to make reasonable recommendations and, and minor revisions to the proposed UGA boundary, um, with this public comment period. Um, because, you know, like we said, city staff's worked hard on this. They're committed to this option. This is their recommendation. Um, and this is our only opportunity to, to propose these changes because, uh, we were not engaged or involved with the development of alternative three. And so to make this public comment period effective, we'd ask that you would, um, ask city staff to adjust the urban growth boundary specifically to include the Kohler one hundred acres that was taken out. Um, Mr. Gonzalez made a statement that the area's cost there to develop. Um, that's, um, I guess that's, that's not a, 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 a good reason to remove that property. The property is ready to be developed. The seller wants to sell it, and developer wants to develop and is willing to extend su- city sewer over a mile um, to serve this property, which not only opens up this hundred acres, uh, with gravity sewer, it also extends city water a half a mile, and that opens up four hundred acres immediately adjacent, another four hundred, um, to the, to the east of it. And it's kinda grainy to see in the, um, the, the letter Mr. Fickers provided on May twentieth, but there are some exhibits there that kinda show what the proposal is. And so this fits in line with the city's, um, need for housing. Um, when a developer's ready to, to, to invest in city infrastructure, um, you know, you can imagine what a mile of sewer opens up uh, for immediately for development. So it's a reasonable alternative, and like Mr. Fickers said earlier, to prime residential property, um, for reviews, and the alternative is to develop in the county on well and septic. And that's one of the, the, the policies or goals of the comprehensive plan is to eliminate or discourage developments on septic systems. So we think, uh, a minor revision to the urban growth boundary is acceptableness. And I believe that the comprehensive plan update is another item. Is that correct?
Yes, after this.
And so, so I'll hold my comments on that item to speak to the land use portion of it. So I'm available for any questions as well. And, and I would ask if any of the commissioners have had read Mr. Fickers's email and had any questions specifically on those exhibits. Um, like, I'm looking at a copy of it right now, and I can't even read it. I had to go to my original print to, to see what that exhibit is. So, um, my recommendation is, the request to city staff is, if we could get some better quality, um, a staff report here on these prints. We submitted actual PDFs. They can be inserted. They don't have to be scanned in. That would be helpful, I think, for everybody. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Stromstad. Uh, I'm waiting to hear if any commissioners have questions.
Madam Chair, this is Jerry Cochran again, and, and I'm not sure, maybe this is not a question for Mr. Stromstad. Maybe it's back to Mr. Fickers. Um, I, I mean, or, or maybe it's to staff. I'm curious of, is there any rationale on the, the commercial designation? I believe it's of the Oberding property. I, I could have it mixed up. Um, and by the way, my, my prints are very clear, so maybe it's the package you got. Uh, I have great PDFs, um, and I think most of the commission did, so that's good. Um, but I, I'm curious about the, it sounds like there's a lot of heartburn from the Oberding and, and Mr. Fickers about the commercial designation of the Oberding property. I'm curious if the ra- what's the rationale? I mean, I definitely see the comparisons and the ability to decrease low residency, low-density residential uh, in favor of some of the other areas like commercial is a driver. Um, is that just the main driver of why tho- and, and, you know, is the rationale for those three hundred acres? Or I'm just curious if there was some selection process that resulted in that section being designated commercial. I hope I asked a, I hope I asked an understandable question.
This is, this is Caleb Stromstad. I mean, you understand what we're coming for, uh, Mr. Commissioner. Um, we, where we've been asking for that same discussion, or, or some rationale behind that, and so we'd be happy to hear city staff's com- or response to your, your comment.
Hi, good evening, members of the planning commission. Again, uh, I, this is about the commercial designation on the property in the expanded urban growth area. I, I, I almost feel as if the comments that have been made earlier in the discussion answered the question. The idea to put commercial in a sea of residential is the exact purpose. Those residents need a place to live and a place to shop and a place to buy groceries and a place to do whatever it is that they need that may provide uh, business or employment opportunities. Um, I understand that Road sixty-eight and eventually Broadmoor and, and areas along Broad, uh, I'm sorry, Br- uh, Broadmoor Boulevard North, and eventual areas up well into the expanded urban growth area of any alternative will have additional commercial identified on them. But putting commercial in a sea of residential i- is, is good planning practice. You reduce the amount of times that people have to travel further to get to a specific service. Now, we don't know what businesses may be located there. And keep in mind that commercial has various land use, I'm sorry, zoning classifications within it. Additionally, there, there is definitely room for small modifications and refinements to land use. Land use should never be static. It should never be concrete. It should be adaptable to the needs of our entire community. And staff believes that we are absolutely appropriate in designating additional commercial opportunities for employment and commercial services in the expanded urban growth area to make up for the fact that Pasco is extremely underserved. This was identified in the Somos Pasco study that was a collaborative effort between Franklin County, the Port of Pasco, the City of Pasco, and the Benton Franklin Council of Governments. This is a direct output from those recommendations. So we believe we are justified in allocating commercial designation in a sea of residential. Now, could it be off by a few acres? Absolutely. Land use is not perfect, and it never will be. But to simply remove it and put low-density residential there, well, where are we gonna make up for that land elsewhere? So it's not just replace and put it somewhere else. No, we have to make up for it somewhere else and the costs associated with that, and the long-term impacts of continuing to develop in a low-density dwelling unit, single-family residential pattern. If we're curious as to why Road sixty-eight looks the way it does today, it is these practices that have led up to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Uh, this is Jerry Cochran. That helps a lot. I'm sorry if I didn't pick that up from previous discussions, but that makes total sense to me. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, I am not hearing any other commissioners. So with that, I will move on to George Docstatter.
Thank you, Chairman. This is George Docstatter, six one one nine Burton Boulevard, Desert Hills Realty in Pasco. And I'm here to ask, I asked last time, for the commissioners to drive around and look at the area and see what kind of development there is gonna be out there. I'm asking for you to go back to alternative two. It was sat down with, uh, the landlords and talked about. The property was bought out of the area. Some was added. Negotiations were held with the Port of Pasco for airspace easement over, uh, part of the Oberding property along Clark Road, uh, all with the understanding that was coming in the city boundaries. But the big question I've got, we're sitting here looking, alternative two is seventy percent, seventy-six percent low-density residential. Alternative three is fifty-two percent. It's not about where I'm gonna live because I'm not gonna be here in twenty years. And it's not about where the commissioners are gonna live. This is about where our kids and grandkids are gonna live and what kind of neighborhoods you want them to have. And most of us around here, I've been selling real estate forty-five years. The dream home for the average Pasco person is a Rambler House on a nice lot with a three-car garage and a place to park a boat or RV. And you're not gonna do it with fifty-two percent of the property low-residential because you're gonna have to cram in deaky lots that are just gonna demand two-story houses next to each other. And especially with this road connectivity deal that they're pushing, that's gonna cut out probably fifteen percent of the buildable land in Pasco. So I ask you, before you vote on anything, then drive around and look at the area. The northwest corner on alternative two, if you get above the Kohler property, it's already developed. On alternative two, if you go out Clark Road, Clark Edition's already developed. So you're not gonna bring in a bunch of vacant land by putting Clark Road as the boundary as it is, it's, uh, shown in alternative two. And I wish that you would all go drive around and think what kind of town you want your kids and grandkids to grow up in. And I really hope that you look at it and decide on alternative two. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Docstatter. I don't believe, uh, we have any questions for you, but I would like to open the floor to the next speaker, Fred Oberding.
Hello, my name is Fred Oberding. I reside at nine eleven Birch Road in Pasco, just north of the city a few miles. If you wouldn't mind, I would like to go back to that other slide. I think I can explain myself a little bit better, the other, other urban growth area that had the, uh, proposals to entry on it.
The yellow? Yeah, the yellow one? The big one?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yes, that one there. Uh, and, uh, if you can see right in the center there, there are the three pink squares. My piece of property is the one on the lower left. Yes. Uh, you, you might know that the two to the right or the one immediately to the right of that is, is Clark Edition. And that's already developed in subplots of one to five acres. It was that, my field, my piece of property was originally in the growth management area, and that's when I negotiated with the Port of Pasco about- and that's when I negotiated with the Port of Pasco about granting them the airspace as an easement, so everybody knew that moved into that area that there's going to be airplanes flying over. Now, if you would take your marker and go back to the, what would be the lower left-hand corner of my piece of property and draw it, just now, just go down a little bit, now go to the left a little bit with that. Yeah, right in there, that is where the new Pasco High School is going to go. Now, if you go along that black line there to the right a little bit farther, right there, and just this side of that black line there's an elementary school there. And that particular piece of property is is less than half a mile from the high school and a half mile from that grade school. And off to the west, on the other side of Road 68, is one of the new middle schools. And I spent a lot of time after I knew I had to deal with the City of Pasco to try to get this piece of property in, and now I find it gone. I am not the least bit happy about that, but we did it with the intention because we knew the schools were going there, know it's good. They've all on the ground under this low residential. And that's all the comments I have about this, I'll save my other comments for the next section on the updates, thank you very much. Oh, it's up, I, there is one other thing. I have access to two Suburbans and I would love to show any of you commissioners, planties or whatever your role is in this decision-making. Any day of the week, any hour of the day, I will give you a tour of this property so you can kind of see what we're talking about. Know where Clark Road is. Know where this property is, know where the high school is going to be. And I'm also showing where this 30 acres that's just near, almost inaccessible is at. Anyway, my phone number is 727-2505, I would love to show any and all of you the area out there so you can get a better feel for it. Thank you very much for your time and your patience.
Thank you so much, Mr. Oberding. Just a question for Pasco staff. Can you just show us where Road 68 is on the this comparison map? Mr. White?
You mean?
No, where you just were, yeah, just, just
Jeez, I don't know.
Can you show?
Go to the left a little bit.
Goes like that. Great.
Okay. No. You need to, you need to I don't, I don't see it on my comparison map yet, um.
Yeah.
No, it's more to, more to the left.
Hold on a second, we're trying to get it.
A little more to the left.
Ah, okay. Great, thank you very much, it's a, I have to save this map, it's a little hard for me to get my, catch some of my bearings. That's neither here nor there. Okay. With that, Randy Mullen. You're next.
Thank you, my name is Randy Mullen, 1611 Mitchfield Drive, Pasco, Washington. My first comment is in support of alternative number two of the growth management map and and myself and my family. We own property that would have been be north of the Kohler property that was talked about a few minutes ago. And a lot of this property is already being developed as we speak. And it just doesn't make sense to me why why we would not include this property in the urban growth area when so much of it is being developed under county rules and it just seems like it would be much better served under the city rules where we could get some sewer and water out to that, to that, to that area. My second comment is about the the comprehensive plan of of along Road 68, the property that we own along Road 68 without reiterating what I've already said last month about having a willing, enabled buyer.
Mr. Mullen, Mr. Mullen, I'm sorry, just to stop you, we are going to be going on to a public hearing regarding the comprehensive plan once we finish this. So would you mind holding your thoughts?
Like a lot of people were talking about it already, so that's why I, I'm willing to wait, so if you have any questions about the property along that we have along the Columbia River on the very far left, very far north, I'll answer those.
Great, thank you so much.
You bet, no problem.
Okay, Steve Baumann.
This is Caleb Stromstad, that's the end, Steve Baumann was not able to attend tonight and neither was Mr. Greeno.
Oh. Okay. Okay, thank you so much, Mr. Stromstad. I'm just gonna look to the staff to let us know whether there are other people who want to speak to this item.
I'm not sure, I don't, oh, yes, Mr. Laird, Mr. Laird wants to speak.
Mr. Laird. You now have the floor.
Oh, just a moment, please. There you go, Mr. Charles.
Okay, Charles Laird.
Thanks, thanks, Madam Chair, Charles Laird, I live at 271 Sixth Road 64 in Pasco and I'm here to speak on behalf of Thanksgiving Limited Partnership. And after reviewing the the draft EIS, we had a question, there was more of a clarification question, we're hoping staff can help us with. Thanksgiving sending a letter, asking the question, so if you haven't read it, recommend you do that. But in a nutshell, in reading the report, it looks, if you look at the acreage breakdown from alternative number two to alternative number three, it looks as though there was a net gain in industrial acres of one acre, of one acre. And what we do know regarding the Thanksgiving property is that the the 120 that was included in alternative two was reduced to 40, so there's a net loss of 80 acres of industrial property. And we could not see anywhere on the, on the, on the alternative three map where the city gained that 80 acres. And and we asked the question because we're curious as to, you know, how that property that the city gained compares in regards to the Growth Management Act goals. And and then secondarily, if if table five is correct and already been an alternative that's approved and has not, the acres have not been adjusted to reflect the reduction. We we would, we would ask that it just remain the same. But I I'd like to hear staff's comment on it because I I we're not, you know, we we don't want to assume we're correct in this either, there may be something we're missing.
Thank you so much, Mr. Laird. I'm now going to turn it over to staff.
Hi, to address Mr. Laird's comments, he's actually talking about tables in the draft environmental impact statement, so the table numbers he was referencing are not here in the staff report or in the presentation. We did receive his comments on on the 15th, actually the night before. Mr. Laird, there actually is a discrepancy in table two specifically with the existing urban growth area, there there was a discrepancy in what staff calculated in early 2018 for what was within the urban growth area and out. And a portion of that land actually was included in the existing urban growth area, it was an error. So the tables are correct, it's the existing UGA number that will be corrected prior to the issuance of the final environmental impact statement, I hope that addresses your question, Mr. Laird.
So I guess just as a follow-up question, so you're saying that the the total industrial acres in alternative two is less than what it should have represented? Is that, do I understand that right?
I hesitate to to answer that with an absolute, but I believe that is the answer, what what happened was during the land use calculations for the existing urban growth area, the property which you are seeking to have added into alternative number three was misappropriated to the existing urban growth area, so there was a discrepancy on the existing urban growth areas alternative, what you see for the industrial increases in both two and three are correct. It is the existing UGA number that will have to be revised and corrected prior to the EIS is finalized. And and I can follow up with you within the next few days and confirm that number with you, Mr. Laird.
Okay, appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. White, anyone else?
Mr. Burns was on the list, I don't know if he is any longer, though.
Mr. Burns, would you like to speak? I'm going to take that as a no, anyone else? No, okay. No one on the line has made it obvious to us, no one else on the line has made it obvious that you want to speak to this item. I see Mr. Gonzalez has approached the podium, do you have something else you wanted to add?
Yes, I do want to add that we have received comments on, these items kind of get confusing because they're different but very related and critical of each other. But the Washington State Department of Commerce did provide comments on this, and I want to read to you a part of their comments because I think it will it's an important component of regardless of what urban growth area is expanded of what the city and Franklin County will have to do to ensure that appropriate development is what we see out there in the future, and it reads, as the city and county move forward with the urban growth area review and adoption, our core recommendation is to commit to adopting policies, agreements, and regulations on how development occurs in the unincorporated UGA. Development phasing is a critical tool, a critical tool to prevent a pattern of sprawling, low-density development from occurring or vesting in areas prior to the ability to support urban densities. And I and I wanted to state that portion of the comment because so much of the reason why we actually have to expand 3,500 acres, which is an extremely large expansion request is because of the development pattern that has existed or has been developed in the Riverview area when it was incorporated as a very rural area, yet it does count against us. And a lot, and although a lot of the underutilized vacant parcels that we find in Riverview could potentially have additional development on them. I I think for any of us who've been out there, we can see that the streets don't necessarily line up, they end in backyards, they end in front porches. The same problem exists with providing urban levels of sewer and utility out there where it just can't justify the cost of what it takes to provide sewer in a portion of this area. So a part of the reason why you have to expand so much is what we've already done, that we can no longer, we can't redo that, and so I just thought it would be important for us to to understand the Washington State Department of Commerce's comments and also our responsibility to the entire city of Pasco with regards to meeting the intent of the Growth Management Act. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. So with that, I am going to once again go to commissioners. And now we are open for discussion.
This is Commissioner Jordan.
Please.
I have a question for staff. With the UGA land designations, does that actually zone that land for those designations, or is that just this is where we think it's going to happen and this is how we envision it going? But as the land actually comes into the city, it's zoned as it's coming in?
So the the urban growth area itself tells us the land that we have to accommodate growth through the year 2038. So it will have a land use applied and the next step would be to, would, before any of this would be, within the city, would obviously would be to annex and zone it appropriately, however, keep in mind that guidance from the Washington State Department of Commerce is likely to recommend prior to approval, a, two things, one would be a phasing, a sort of phasing mechanism that is identified throughout one of the Washington Administrative Codes that states that before we annex this property, it's got the appropriate land use, zoning, density, and pattern to facilitate appropriate urban levels of growth. And the second would be the development, joint development standards with Franklin County. Now, we don't have jurisdiction of what happens in Franklin County. So before any of the urban growth area is developed, at least for the city's purposes, we would very much like to have those in place, those mechanisms in place to ensure that we don't have to come back in 2025 and say, you know what, we need another 500 acres, we need a 1,000 acres. That means that there was a disconnect and an error somewhere. And we cannot continually do that, the further north we go, obviously the more rural, more agricultural, Franklin County primarily agricultural economy is important for us to preserve that to the maximum extent possible.
Thank you, and then, I, I, sorry, I do have another question, and this is for the landowners. So for the Kohler property and the Mullen property up north of that, one of the reasons it's not being included is because of studies that need to be done. If the land is already being developed up north of that, have the studies that need to be done to make the development appropriate, have they already been done and paid for by the actual developers or landowners?
Commissioner Jordan, that, this is Rick White, that's part of the problem, the the property that was left out that you see, or maybe, maybe you don't see, you see on the screen here is developing at densities that are not considered urban. It's a large lot residential development. If it's two per acre, I would be surprised, it's probably more like half a dwelling unit per acre, maybe. The pattern that results from that development that is occurring now was the development pattern that occurred in the very center of town in the Riverview area that is causing, in hindsight now, so much development concern and and development problems for using infill in the Riverview area. It's not planned, it's not based around utility lines or a comprehensive street grid system. And what it does is prevents infill. So, no, to my knowledge, there are no development studies that have been accomplished for the Kohler property, the property to the south of the Kohler property that is in our current urban boundary that we cannot remove because the city supplies water to it, to almost all of those large lot developments. And it does present problems for densification basically forever.
Commissioner, okay, so this is one of the things I'm trying to, I'm wrestling with here. It's that it will not serve, it doesn't serve the city to expand that chunk into the urban growth area. That's not going to change it being develop, its ability to be developed any smarter or or future, have any future infill.
Well, again, not, not, probably not able to answer that absolutely, but this goes back to Commissioner Jordan's question. It still remains in Franklin County. And so, yes, it has a land use designation, assuming it's included. The land use designations have been developed to accommodate our population estimate. But no, it is not zoned and it is not under the control of the city. And the piece that Mr. Gonzalez read to you from the Department of Commerce And the piece that Mr. Gonzalez read to you from the Department of Commerce. I think they clearly acknowledge that there are, there is. A substantial amount of work to do with Franklin County to prevent exactly what's happening now. With the Kohler property or excuse me with, that happened with the property to the south of the Kohler property. And uh possibly the uh property that I think the Kohler property is actually all farmed right now. Um, but the property north of Kohler. Long answer, but it's a complicated question. Um.
Okay, so uh to Commissioner Jordan's other, did you want to say something else?
Yes, uh, there may be some speakers that wish to speak once the commission discussion is done. I see a couple of follow-up uh hands raised on the screen.
Okay, so, um, there was the concern on the Oberding property about the zoning. Uh, designation changing. They were upset that it is now commercial. I'm a little confused because I believe what you're, what you said earlier was that. Um, whatever designation it currently has will eventually have to be approved at a different step.
Yeah, so the land use is the, the highest level of, of use of, of old land, land use category. So it will have a commercial land use or it could have a residential land use, but. Within uh, just like our existing land use and zoning classifications. A variety of zoning classifications nest within a certain land use. So with any commercial land use. Uh, you have office C one, I believe, C two. Um, and also a potential for dwelling units, I believe in the C one. Um, uh, uh, classification. It's just like with residential, you have low, medium, high RS one, RS twelve, RS twenty, et cetera. So the land use is, isn't the final call. It says in general, this is what we expect to have here. And then uh through the annexation process and Mr. White, please correct me if I'm, I'm incorrect here. Through the annexation process, a zoning will be uh identified for that specific uh piece of land.
So in other words, uh, Mr. Oberding doesn't need to be worried right now?
Well, no, I, I would never say he doesn't need to be worried. I think it's, it's great to have the, the public feedback here. I would say that his concern is more oriented towards the next item on tonight's agenda and then throughout the rest of the summer.
Okay, thank you. Um, other questions or comments as a part of the discussion? That the commissioners are having right now?
Hey, this is Commissioner Cochran.
Please.
Hey, I, I just had a quick comment. I, this is a difficult process and I, there's lots of constituencies to satisfy. And I just want to first say I appreciate the staff trying to come up with a compromised kind of alternative that. You know, there's pressures from all sides and to me, this appears to be a valley, a very balanced outcome. I know that it, you can't please everybody and it's not gonna be perfect. But it seems like there was a lot of feedback both ways given and this kind of was a meet in the middle as, as it appears to me. So I just wanted to thank staff. Cause I know you have a lot of constituencies to satisfy.
Hi, this is Commissioner Myron, if I could uh speak.
Please.
Um, I also wanted to echo Commissioner Cochran's uh comments as well. Um, I was sort of. Uh, the, the hearing process to finalize, there may be more speakers, but. Um, you know, I think, I think staff is drawing a good, a good compromise balance between the need to accommodate growth. Certainly going to occur. Um, a- along with. Uh, the need for the city to be financially uh cognizant of what those investments are going like. Wish, uh, I, I am anguished about some of the, the land use concerns that. Property has either been left out or uh it, it may be under a designation that they wouldn't. So I'm hoping under this next uh agenda tonight, we can, we can give. Clarity for, for how to manage some of those things, but in terms of the urban growth here. I think has struck a balance, you know, I, I know some groups out there that would, that the. The growth theory not to expand at all. Um, so that, like, like Commissioner Cochran said, there's pressure on. Uh, I think, I think staff has struck a reasonable balance. This is a process, but um, those are my, those are my two after hearing, um, you know, last couple of months of hearings and. I will, um, I will step back now.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Myron. Any other comments from commissioners? How about we go to uh other speakers? Mr. White, did you say there were some other folks who might want to make comments?
Mr. Fickus has his hand raised.
Mr. Fickus has his hand raised. Mr. Fickus.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chairman. Um, I think I can answer some of the questions. And I, 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 I'm gonna say this with all due respect and I agree that the, the planning department has done a great job. But they're giving, they're answering some of your questions incorrectly. Again, I'm a land use and real estate attorney. I've been doing this for thirty-four years. This is what I do. Commissioner Jordan, let me simply answer your question. The UGA is simply a boundary on a map. It's where the city may expand in the next twenty years. You may annex it, you may never not. Never, but the map circulated by Jacob also includes what's called a future land use map. And you have to designate the property under your comprehensive plan. The Oberding property, a portion of that is designated commercial, which means it can never be residential. Uh, you're basically taking, so there's two components. Uh, the, the UGA is just a boundary. And, and this is the time to deal with it now. When you do the boundary, you also have to designate the property. And under the Growth Management Act, you can't have a use or zoning that's inconsistent with your comprehensive plan. This is the one opportunity that you have to fix it. And by the way, again, I. I appreciate the staff's balance, but I'm concerned with the comments I'm seeing. You have the power. Listening to the public input on making minor changes and all we're asking for. Is the Oberding property should not be designated commercial. You also asked, has there studies been done? And I think during the testimony, Jacob Gonzalez was trying to refer to a. Yeah, he was concerned that this was on the Kohler property about adding property that needed a cultural resources survey. That's, that's a normal part of plating that the Indian nation usually asks for and those studies are done by the developer and can be easily done. So that's. The, the, there's no studies that need to be done to consider adding the Kohler property, the property in the northwest corner. There is a policy decision how large your UGA should be. And, and again, on the Kohler property, uh, I think with sewer and water, the density could be. Um, developed at urban levels and that's what we're saying. And I think that's what Mr. Muller say, Mullen's saying. So th- there is, this is the, this is the one time you're, you're doing two things. You're adding to the boundaries of the u- urban growth area and you're making a designation. And the Oberding designation, uh, you know, I, I, I heard Jacob say, I mean, if he were being honest, and I, I, he's honest. It's probably because your expensive consultant recommended some commercial property spread throughout the residential area. But Mr. Mullen has already told you, he's got commercial property ready to be designated along Road sixty-eight. You don't throw commercial property where there's no roads and no infrastructure. All you're gonna do is make sure this property never develops by the high school. Cause there's no demand for a gas station or office buildings next to your high school. It's not gonna happen. So I, I'm just concerned while Jacob's doing a good job defending his proposal and I don't want to put him on the defensive, I'm on his team. Small changes to alternative three can be made and it's your job to recommend them. So anyways, that, that, that's my, my comment. So I, I didn't realize that the comp plan amendments are being designated as item two. But they're, they're, they're closely tailored, so. So uh, uh, again, it's really important to get the designation right, whether it's commercial, residential, industrial. It's important to get it right now because it can't be changed without significant legal process. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Fickis. Anyone else, Mr. White?
Not seeing anybody, although Mr. Burns has returned to the screen. Again, I don't know if he wants to speak, I've.
Mr. Burns, did you plan on addressing us?
Perhaps not. His microphone is off and it indicates it was self-muted.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, alright, so I believe we are back in discussion. Planning commissioners. Um, I have one, I have a question for Mr. Gonzalez. Um, so the.
Oh.
There, there's Mr. Burns.
Mr. Burns, did you want to say something?
Yes, um, just having a hard time figuring out the computer, you know?
It's okay.
Yeah, I'm all for the, the, uh. The Kohler property, if, if you do drive, if, I don't know if you guys have been out there, but when you drive out there. The Mullen property, there's some subdivision going on there. And south, uh, there was a Sanderson estate that was subdivided and then some of our ground on Burns Road was subdivided. And it's in the ur- urban growth was subdivided. I, I have a problem. I like to see more or less straight lines. You know, when you move things out, I would have a straight line in there and, and take in that Kohler property and that. And uh, the Mullen property and, you know, start along the river and work your way over in my, that, that's my opinion. And I guess later on I can talk to you about that on the Burns property, um. The, the mixed, let's say, uh, mixed use, I want to. Uh, I don't understand what that means and uh, will that be later on?
Yeah, we're gonna be talking about the, the comprehensive plan later after this.
Yeah, and then that, then over on a, on, um, I guess it'd be Dent and uh. One hundred, I call it one hundred, I guess it's Broadmore and Easy Street. Uh, that's a awfully big piece of property to, to have commercial when you. You go over there at Road sixty-eight, you got all that commercial ground over there, it looks like you have. And on Taylor Flats and Road sixty-eight, that looks like a good piece of property to, to have that at. But uh, on, 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 uh. That's, that's, that's a pretty big chunk to have commercial in my book on, on.
Why are they so close?
Yeah, why are they so close too?
Great, thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Burns. Uh, great, so, um. I believe now we are going back into our discussion unless there's any other comments from staff. No? Okay, I have a question. Um, so there have been several comments here in our public hearing. Uh, period, um, for slight variations to, well, some slight, some not so slight. Variations being made to option three. Um, Mr. Gonzalez, might you be able to speak to the possibility of those?
Yeah, uh, staff believes that we can address uh modifications to the land use. Um, it, throughout the comprehensive plan process uh this summer. Um, obviously that process is still ongoing. Um, the land use for the comprehensive plan has not been set in stone, although we do have. Uh, based on uh the results of the EIS, although still uh drafted and not finalized. We do have recommendations and comments from a variety of state agencies and public comment. That have told us the kind of development patterns they'd like to see. Uh, but absolutely, we'd be able to take into account minor modifications to the land use component of the uh expanded UGA. For the comprehensive plan as we move forward with that effort uh this summer through uh June, July, uh end of August.
And you can, you're saying that you can do this. Can you do this prior to us approving this or do we approve it first and then you would make those?
We, tonight's motion is for the recommendation uh to city council to allow staff to apply. For an expansion of the urban growth area to Franklin County. Franklin County holds the, that's where the actual action will take place. Planning Commission has a recommendation. Um, the city council would have a resolution. Franklin County actually has the definitive action on uh when they get. Whatever varied uh application they get from this process, they are the final decision makers on this. We cannot do that without going through obviously the planning commission and the city council.
Thank you. Um, did I hear one of my fellow commissioners?
Uh, yes, Madam Chair, this is Commissioner Myron, uh, again. If we could go back. Or at least refer to the alternative two and three map uh comparison. I, I was just noticing, I mentioned this before, uh, not as eloquently, but. Seems that the uh Broadmore uh master plan area in alternatives two versus three looks, looks different. And I, I've wondered if under alternative two, why, why would the Broadmore area be developed differently? In terms of, of density uses there and. And, and that was just the extent of my question. Thanks.
Yeah, absolutely. A good question. So during the development of alternative number two Broadmore, al- although uh had been identified as an area for growth. Uh, specific land uses and densities uh were not allocated or identified. And even uh today, the Broadmore master planning effort is still in progress. What we do know is that we can uh, we can approximate what we can account for with regards to housing. And commercial square footage in the Broadmore area. That is what also allowed us to decrease the urban growth area as well. Um, we're not gonna get a lot of infill in River View, but we are gonna get. Uh, some great development and some valuable property development out in the Broadmore area. And so that's why you see. The land uses more identified in the Broadmore and uh the Broadmore area. And that's because by the time you, alternative number three was developed, more of Broadmore was developed as well. So I hope that answers your question, Commissioner Myron.
Yes, it does. Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez.
Okay, so, um, I'm thinking commissioners unless. Do you want to go line by line or does anyone want to uh make a? Make a motion at this time? Or do I have to close the public, public hearing first or how does that work? Okay, so I am going to, uh. Ask if there's any more public comment, going once, going twice. I now close the public comment period. Um, commissioners, does anyone want to make a motion?
Yeah, Madam Chair, uh, this is Commissioner Myron. I, uh, if you can obtain a, a motion, uh, I move the planning commission. Public here and recommend to uh city of Pasco that the preferred urban growth boundary be amended. Per exhibit number one, uh, alternative.
Just to, don't, don't want to interrupt. We actually updated the motion um that we sent to the planning commission members. I apologize if not everybody received the motion.
That's the alternative two, right?
Okay, yeah, this is Commissioner Myron. I can say, I rescind, I rescind my motion.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Myron. Um, it seems there's a little bit of confusion right now, what the, what the motion is. That's on the table.
Yeah, yeah, the updated motion that was uh submitted to the members of the planning commission this morning identifies. Uh, the motion that allows staff to proceed to the Pasco City Council. With an application to Franklin County to expand the urban growth area. And this, this is based on guidance from the Washington State Department of Ecology.
Okay, just to expand the urban growth area, that's all. And we're not referring to any of the alternatives in this. Okay, commissioners, does anyone want to make a motion?
This is Commissioner Cochran. I so move uh according to Mr. Gonzalez's updated recommendation.
Thank you, Commissioner Cochran. Um, did anyone want to second that?
I second that.
I'm not sure who that was.
Paul Mendez.
Paul Mendez. Paul Mendez, thank you, Commissioner Mendez. Uh, alright, so all those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Let the record show that it was moved by Commissioner Cochran and seconded by Commissioner Mendez. The motion passed unanimous unanimously. Explanation of the path forward.
Yes, uh. Sorry about that, uh, staff will uh finalize a staff report to the Pasco City Council. Will consult with the Washington State Department of Ecology on uh ensuring proper procedure is followed. And then move forward with a resolution, draft resolution at the Pasco City Council likely in early July.
Thank you very much, we are now going to move on to the next item. Which is a public hearing D, the comprehensive plan amendment. This is a comprehensive plan plan update MFCPA twenty twenty zero zero two. And uh, we have that um in front of us. Would staff like to speak to this?
Absolutely, good evening, uh, members of the planning commission, in front of you today is the uh update on the comprehensive plan. Uh, now you've seen uh various iterations of the comprehensive plan likely since January of twenty eighteen. And if you recall, uh, beginning in uh, I believe July, August, September, October, November. You saw the actual specific elements of the comprehensive plan. Um, they were obviously in a draft stage, we're still in a draft stage today. Uh, but obviously, we have an entire package ready to share with you and today's uh presentation will summarize this. And also keep in mind, this is a public hearing, so uh obviously welcome any public comment as we proceed further with this uh very important document for the city of Pasco. Um, so for uh those that want a little bit more information on on the relationship and the framework for the comprehensive plan, obviously, it's regulated. By the Washington State Growth Management Act identified in the RCW identified on the screen. The next component is compliance with the Franklin County countywide planning policies and underneath that. Since Pasco's comprehensive plan, I do wanna uh state that Franklin County's Board of Commissioners actually updated their countywide planning policies. Planning policies, uh, I believe in October of twenty nineteen, and so our comprehensive plan is in compliance now with. Franklin County's updated uh policies. So, uh, this might help answer a question that came up earlier, so how does a comprehensive plan work, obviously, it's a, it's a series and statement of goals. That lead to policies that eventually through the implementation, through regulation. Uh, through the regulations, so this is code amendments, uh, development standard updates, it's what we approved this uh earlier this evening with the. Port of Pasco's waterfront development district, so we have goals. We have policies and then the next step is the actual work, which is the implementation of uh set goals and policies. So the Growth Management Act has fourteen planning goals, you can see them identified on the left side. They range, again, this is what you saw uh through the uh table in the prior presentation. Um, but they range from concentrating urban growth, reduction of straw, uh, reduction of sprawl, the consideration of multimodal regional transportation planning. Affordable housing, economic development, property rights. Permit processing, natural resource industries, open space recreation. Environmental protection, public participation. Municipal facilities and services, historic and cultural preservation and shoreline management. The, those planning goals lead into the mandatory comprehensive planning elements. And that's what we've seen and shared with the planning commission over the past year, so. Uh, so everything from land use and housing to resource lands and on city utilities, et cetera. Those that you see highlighted in the orange box are what we're gonna focus on today. Uh, obviously, we will be back in July and likely with a special meeting, uh, two meetings in August. So that we identify appropriately all of the elements of the comprehensive plan. So, uh, I thought this was an interesting chart, obviously, we've seen how fast Pasco's grown, but in comparison to when the. Comprehensive plans have been adopted, I think it puts a little bit of a different narrative on here. So our first comprehensive plan was adopted in nineteen ninety-five, a much different world. Two thousand eight was our current comprehensive plan. A very different world, I think the technology that we're using today probably didn't exist back then, I don't know if the iPhone was around. But obviously, the world has changed quite a bit, and so a lot of effort went into updating the goals and policies. Of our comprehensive plan to ensure that the current Pasco City Council's goals and guidance from the planning commission, along with. Uh, uh, general good planning practices, uh, were all included in this current draft of the comprehensive plan. So the comprehensive plan is broken, it's a, it's a massive document. And it's broken down into a series of uh documents itself, so you have volume one, which is the goals and policies, this is a. I don't wanna say it's a quick read because it's not, but it's the one, if you wanna get everything in one quick dose, this would be the document to read. Um, it identifies the goals and policies, again, the comprehensive plan framework, relationship to various GMA. And commerce uh goals and policies, uh, again Franklin County. And it also has an overview of the comp plan and a uh, the implementation component. So this is a very large executive summary. At best. The next uh component is the supporting analysis, if you like data. If you like numbers, this is the portion of the comprehensive plan you really want to read. This includes all of the analysis regarding transportation forecasting, affordable housing. Uh, assessments and analysis on sewer and water utilities. And again, the implementation tools to help meet the goals and policies identified in volume one. And then, um, I wanted to put this here a few times in the comprehensive plan, uh, obviously, we we didn't print out hundreds of pages for everyone. But it is available on our website. Uh, with all of our comments and documents, so if you have an opportunity, please go to the City Pasco website, search for comprehensive plan, you'll have access to every element of a comprehensive plan. Please provide comments. So, uh, obviously, the land use element has the mandates for the Growth Management Act, it has the varying land use designation types. Uh, areas and coverages, also the goals and policies of land use as well, so you have your land use, that's your higher level category. You have zoning, which is a specific zoning classification. And then within that, which is what we see a lot here at the planning commission, is the actual PMC, is the municipal standard, these are your. Height limitations, your minimum lot sizes, your setbacks, et cetera. So we have new land use types introduced in the comprehensive plan. Uh, we've uh added medium density, but it's not really a, a, a new use, uh, in the current comprehensive plan, there was. A uh, it was given the title of mixed residential. Medium density is a little bit more of an appropriate term as we move forward. Those highlighted, those highlighted in the box, medium high density residential. The mixed use interchange, neighborhood and regional, those are all applicable to the Broadmore area and those aren't finalized yet, obviously. But Broadmore itself will have its own land use with specific development standards to ensure that the properties develop as the vision has uh. Has been set, um, so it have almost an overlay of sorts, and then we, uh, as you see, and we mentioned up in the uh. In the UGA conversation, a designation of a federal trust land to account for the Confederate tribes of coal reservation and their. Their plans out there uh off of three ninety-five, so we have some brand new land uses, it's kind of exciting. And while we won't see those identified in the map you see today, the next time you see this, they will be, they will be different. So here's a map we see quite a bit, this is the draft future land use map. Uh, you can see, uh, obviously, the area in the UGA, which we spent some time on, has a much more variety of land uses. The Broadmore area has those uh that have been included, I'm sorry, those that have been identified through the master planning efforts still in progress. Those have now been allocated here. Um, and you'll also see a few exciting areas along the waterfront, one which is the pink mixed residential commercial. The Port of Pasco's waterfront development district will be enabled through that mixed residential, commercial land use. And then a little bit harder to see, uh, along where the Blue Bridge would be, you'd see additional densities. Uh, added for the uh, uh, the upzone that's occurring there with the multifamily units going on along the Columbia River, very exciting project. Um, obviously, the industrial area to the north, the preservation of departmental resources, expanded airport and industrial lands. Um, et cetera. So, obviously, this is not gonna be the easiest thing to read, but presenting a pie chart with all the different land uses is always gonna be a little bit difficult on the eyes. But you can see industrial and low density residential obviously make up a significant component of the land use. Type uh for the city of Pasco, there's numbers there, they're not zero, they're slightly below one percent. But that accounts for the Broadmore area. So just another way to represent what we will have in terms of a draft future land use. Uh, uh, allocation for the city of Pasco and then urban growth area. Next, a very important one, and I wanted, I think it should be emphasized here is the housing element, because this portion of the comprehensive plan. Uh, takes into account a much more refined effort for us to identify the kind of housing that we have in Pasco, the kind of housing we've been building. And maybe more importantly, the kind of housing we actually need here over the next twenty or so years. So on the left uh chart, you see the breakdown of single family, multifamily, mobile home. Uh, the distribution, the percentage of what that accounts for of our total housing stock. And this probably isn't a surprise to anybody, we've seen a significant increase in the single family dwelling units. And then the decreases with multifamily and mobile homes. And on the left side, I'm not sure if you can. See that, but you see the owner versus renter occupied, so we've had an increase. In owner occupied units, which seems like a great thing, and then a decrease in renter occupied, but. If we look back at the chart again, we've also seen a decrease in multifamily units, apartments, duplexes, triplexes, et cetera, being built. So that, that really isn't a surprise either, it it follows along the pattern. This is a map.
I'm sorry, can you go back one second? So, what color is? Mul- uh, single family, multifamily and, um.
And mobile home, and this is two thousand, twenty ten and twenty seventeen, based on the American Community Survey data.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
This is a map that displays the uh housing units, uh, the residential units built by decades, so. Obviously, the darker the green, the more recent, uh, that in gray is kind of central Pasco, historic Pasco. Um, and then you can see the development pattern as it shifted uh pretty, uh, pretty substantially to the north and to the west. I'd also say that those areas that we have uh in central Pasco between three ninety-five and Oregon Avenue. And south of Highway twelve is ob- is also one of the more diverse. Uh, the uh, the divert offers a more diverse housing availability for the city of Pasco. A lot of what cities are trying to do today is replicate what we actually have in central Pasco, which is a mix of single family detached units, large, small. Apartments, accessory dwelling units, et cetera, and I think we should be happy that a big component of central Pasco actually has that available. So I thought this is just a, a good map to keep in mind, uh, shows how we've grown as a city, at least by residential uh unit construction. Now we get into more of the affordable housing component, so this chart uh tells us the percentage of. Uh, you know, res- households in Franklin County, this is through a variety of counties in Washington State. That are identified as severe cost burden, so severe cost burden indicates that a household is spending fifty percent or more of their income on household costs. So, compared to the counties that we have here, obviously, uh Franklin County is, isn't uh maybe uh too much of a concern, but still. We're hovering uh over ten percent of our households spend more than fifty percent of their income. On household costs, and this slide will make a little bit more sense as we continue on with the presentation. I think we've seen this before, so this is a breakdown of the unit types. Uh, for a variety of cities, uh, similar size, slightly larger than some outliers with Bend, Oregon, Salt Lake City and Boise, Idaho. Those are included because right now Pasco's about seventy-seven thousand people in twenty thirty-eight, we'll have roughly a hundred and twenty-two. But the world doesn't stop in twenty thirty-eight, we will go on till twenty forty-five and twenty fifty. So it is safe to assume that pretty soon we will have a hundred and fifty, a hundred and seventy-five and two hundred thousand people living. Uh, in Pasco, obviously, throughout a long-term uh planning horizon. So you can see Pasco is the second from the bottom, uh, just above West Richland. Uh, that light green is the single unit detached. Um, you have the two units that, it it gets a little bit harder to see specifically in Pasco, the ones you can see a little bit more. Are those with ten to nineteen units, specifically those living in mobile home RVs and boats as identified through the census. So how does this compare to the cities here? Well, we have the second most living in single family detached units. And the second highest living in mobile home RVs, boats. Uh, we are in the middle range for three to four units, maybe kind of like a courtyard apartment, a mini apartment, but every other. Category of unit type, we're ranking towards the bottom of of higher density units. Any questions on, on this in particular?
Pink is mobile?
Pink is the mobile home RV or boat as classified by the census.
And the purple is which?
Purple is the ten to nineteen units.
Thank you.
So, I think that leads into an important question, are we building enough of the right housing in Pasco? So the median income is just under sixty thousand dollars, the average household size is three point one seven, and I wanna stick on that one because. E- even as, as staff, we've, we've already known that Pasco has a higher household size than our surrounding jurisdictions, but. It may be because we are building more single family dwelling units than the cities around us. If we've noticed in our surrounding jurisdictions, they have begun to increase their housing densities. And uh, and obviously, the large lot developments are still occurring in Pasco, and while we wanna preserve as much of that as possible. The question that we need to ask ourselves as we plan for the entire city Pasco is, well. Are we providing the right kind of housing for the people that actually live here? And as I mentioned earlier in the UGA conversation, sixty percent of our trips leave. And twenty-six percent of those trips use Interstate one eighty-two. So that's where the job, the household balance comes into play, it's also where the job, uh, wage. And household type playing a balance, it it may be, uh, obviously, you don't wanna make assumptions, but if most of our employers. Are employing folks that live outside of Pasco, there's a disconnect, obviously, we like to keep as much of that within the community as possible. So, the increase sixty five percent, sixty-five percent increase in median sale price since twenty fifteen. Sixteen percent in the poverty level, seventeen percent receiving some form of government benefit. I think a reasonable question to ask us as we proceed with our future land use planning is. Have we, have we shifted our balance so far to low density that we're beginning to impact who can live in Pasco or not? Go to the next slide here. Uh, so transportation element, uh, ensures the, uh, the requirement for transportation is that it must consider all modes of transportation. Vehicles, freight, bicyclists, transit, pedestrians, emergency services and aviation, and we're lucky in Pasco that we actually have all of these to consider. We have a major regional airport, we have a tremendous freight logistics operations up and down three ninety-five. Uh, lots of rail activity, uh, we have a wonderful trail along the riverfront. Uh, obviously, freight, bicyclists, transit and vehicles obviously come along with residential uh in, and development and growth. So, the transportation element requires us to coordinate with the Washington State Department of Transportation, Ben Franklin Transit. And the Benton Franklin Council of Governments, I believe we all know who Washout and Ben Franklin Transit is. And the Benton Franklin Council of Governments, they are sort of the bank for the region. They, they distribute federal highway administration and federal transit administration dollars and a variety of other funding. Based on projects that they select, that cities submit based on the merits of those projects, so our tip turns into a stip. Which ends up at the council of governments, hopefully, we get funding for it, so it is critical that we try to implement. The goals and policies that they have, that we try to comply with them as much as possible. Uh, obviously, some background transportation of land use planning, uh, the planning decisions we make today have a significant impact on transportation of the future. Uh, I think much of what we have today on Burden, Burden, Sandifer. Road sixty-eight, et cetera, is likely due to what's occurred over the past twenty to thirty years of development. Urban form is a component of that as well, the way our developments occur. And connect to each other, travel behavior, are we making it easier, are we providing different options for people to get around? To access the things that they need on a daily basis, and obviously, the socioeconomic impacts of what transportation planning itself has. On community members here in the city of Pasco. Uh, some, some easy statistics from uh the Port of Pasco and the Tri-City Airport, obviously, uh, flights have increased. They actually are underway on an airport master planning process. Um, I believe it's still in progress, uh, we've been working with them, kind of to make sure our efforts are coordinated. And to preserve as much of that airspace as possible, and on the right side, you see the total boarding from Amtrak. Uh, located not too far from where we're at here today at City Hall, kind of a sporadic pattern, uh, which probably uh resembles the national pattern for Amtrak passengers. Uh, also is uh here in Pasco as well. The next slide, uh, Rick. Uh, there we go, um, Ben Franklin Transit often overlooked here. Um, what you see is on the left side is the park and ride capacity. Uh, these two will come into play in the next item, uh, for sure. Uh, but what you see is the park and ride facilities located in and around the Tri-Cities area. You also see the journey to work data for public transportation, obviously, in the Tri-Cities, it should be no surprise that surreal, uh. Significant, if not most of all of our. Significant, if not most of all of our trips occur uh through private vehicle ownership. Uh only uh less than one percent of commuters use public transportation. That is a, uh I believe, something that the planning department, specifically at the city of Pasco, should take a look and identify why it is that. Either transit is not being used, or why is it not an opportunity for folks to use if they so choose to. So uh now for some vehicle data, this is existing all day traffic counts along our uh functional street classification system. Uh it this obviously probably shouldn't be much of a surprise to anybody that read is Interstate uh one eighty two, along with the Blue Bridge, uh Highway three ninety five. You can see parts of Burton Boulevard approaching uh thirty thousand or more vehicles, that pink portion. Uh Road sixty eight, uh different segments of it obviously have some twenty to thirty thousand folks traveling along Road sixty eight as well. This allows us to identify where people are traveling, hardly using the existing system. This is the future street classification system app. I know we've heard a lot about uh development occurring in places where there's those streets. Well. That's because when they do develop, streets will be required, and this is a uh I I this isn't precise. But it definitely is a framework for what the city of Pasco will be moving forward with in terms of how we need. The transportation system to develop, at least at the higher level, to facilitate transportation uh distribution across. Our local network so that we don't overburden the interstate system. So. While it may look like a straight line today, in reality, it's probably gonna zig, it's gonna zag, and that's 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 okay, but we need these to be relatively in place. This is obviously for the twenty thirty eight, so this would accommodate the the future UGA growth. And with UGA growth comes the costs. These are all the infrastructure improvements necessary in the transportation system. Necessary. So we're starting to see uh kind of all of the uh, I guess, the infrastructure needs kind of beginning to to rise above now. Um Road sixty eight obviously has significant uh improvements needed to carry not only capacity but for safety. Uh you see Burns Road identified there with a short and long range. Of capacity and pedestrian improvements. The dots represent uh intersection improvements. Um and this will be important when subdivisions and developments come through the city Pasco staff. Or require specific transportation impact analysis studies to be conducted. It is imperative that staff follows up as precisely as possible so that when a development does occur. We ensure that number one, we don't overburden one development when it's a cumulative effort. But also that we get out of it what's necessary to keep folks moving and safe. So um I know I ran through that a little bit quick, um although it's eight fifty three. Um so maybe not, but this is a tentative schedule of completion for us. I I know we spoke about some really. Important items in this uh agenda item today. We spoke about land use, housing and transportation. And although at the next meeting we'll focus on capital facilities, environment, et cetera. This, these three topics aren't gonna go away. They will be uh persistent throughout the rest of this process, and so. Um that's the presentation we have for you today. Again, I encourage you to check out the website and read as much of it as you uh as you'd like, and. Again, provide as much comment as you can so that before this is finalized, uh hopefully with an intended adoption this fall. We can take into account the necessary uh refinements uh required of a comprehensive plan. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gonzalez, for that very thorough overview of the comprehensive plan. Updates. I believe we um next will go to. Questions, comments, questions and comments from commissioners. If any of you are still on the line. I'm not hearing anything. Alright, um with that. We will go to the public hearing. Alright, so any individuals who wish to speak on this particular item, now's the time to come forward and speak. Please state your name and address for the record. And uh I know we have a bunch of people who wanted to speak towards this. Um and I asked you to to um sit tight until we came to this moment. Mr. White, do you? Have a list of people who'd like to speak?
I I do not have a list, although I have a muted uh Caleb Stromstedt's microphone. I believe he had uh at least uh several people.
Mr. Stromstedt, let us know.
Uh thank you, Madam Commissioner, Caleb Stromstedt here. Um so I'm gonna be speaking on behalf of uh uh Mr. Ficus. And um Big Sky are representing Big Fu- Big Sky developers, pardon me, um specifically speaking of the comp plan update. Again, this is related to the land use element. Um. It's during this public comment period, it was. You know, we understand the UGA issue is done, and now we're into the comprehensive land use element, but it it. What we're here saying is. Alternative three was developed. W- with city staff and their consultants, only there was no public input from real estate agents, developers. Engineering consultants, contractors, or landowners. And so there was no compromise um done with alternative three. It was city staffs. Uh took a reasonable shot at at coming up with they thought was a scaled down effort from alternative two. But there was no compromise done because this is our only turn, only um time to comment on that. And to speak to land uses, um commercial land use is one of the highest and best use of land. If property could be developed as commercial use, we would be here saying we want more commercial land use because we can develop it. And get the highest and best use from that land. If we're arguing specifically on the old orbiting property to say this thirty acres doesn't make sense for a reason. Uh this is our professional industry. We have real estate agents, we have developers. And consultants, and we know what it takes to develop commercial property. And when we hear from city staff that this is our theory. And the painted red and they will come mentality is what we're being told that doesn't make much sense. And so we would hope that the planning commission throughout this process, because we're not making a decision tonight, would encourage city staff to listen to the development community. Because we have real input and we want to be engaged in this process, so we can all get what we want, and. We want this comp plan updated, um Big Sky developers in particular, um has property that's just standing by for this update to happen. And so. I think another point to be made is a credit to city staff is the significant changes that were made. The only people that are bothering to comment are two development groups and three property owners. And so that's a kudos to city staff of saying. That the alternative three. Um we're getting close, let's make the effort to make the necessary changes to just get it right. Again, we just, the commercial land use designation, the concept of. You know, putting commercial in the sea of residential is a good theory, and I'd like the planning commission to consider. The existing Road sixty eight infrastructure. We have Walmart, Lowe's, um and multiple commercial sites. Pascal's not gonna build out in the commercial area better than it has on Road sixty eight. So with the C- the residential that surrounds that, are people walking to work at Walmart? Are they walking to work at Lowe's? Is this concept of creating this um commercial in a sea of residential actually working? Because that's what we're being told, that's the theory. But is it actually happening? And I would say it's not, not to the scale that it's being presented to us by city staff. Um so commercials are really hard to sell, and I'm I'm not a real estate agent, but I'm surrounded by real estate agents, I'm surrounded by developers, and so I've learned a lot, and I'll let them speak to that. But to hear city staff say we're local government, and we've heard from other go- government agencies on how to develop and um do land use. And that's what we're gonna go with, leaving out the action arm that's gonna make the change actually happen, and so. We just encourage planning commission to encourage staff who is definitely set on alternative three and everything that it encompasses. To consider minor changes, and that's all we're asking for. And we appreciate your support, and um. Again, we think staff has done a tremendous amount of work, consultants have done a tremendous amount of work. Now we just need that additional stakeholder input to really take it to the finish line, so. Available for any further questions if you have them. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Stromstedt. Is there anyone else on your line?
Yes, there is.
Okay, please state your name.
George Docstetter, six one one nine Burton Boulevard, Desert Hills Realty. The concept of putting thirty acres of commercial land out in the middle of Fred Oberding's property. And the people will walk to work there is fine in Seattle or downtown Portland. But I've gone to work between six and eight o'clock every morning on Burton Boulevard, come in Road sixty eight from out the country. I don't see people walking to work at any of the businesses around there. I don't see people standing out on the bus stops catching the bus to go down and work there. People are driving to work. They're not walking, they're not bicycling, they're not. Catching the bus, and that concept is great for a big city, but it doesn't work in the Tri-Cities. And the other thing is with that property on Oberding's, if you went out there and looked at it. You'll notice the BBA main power line that serves the West Pasco substation. On Burns Road goes through there, and we're not gonna put that road straight through. Convention drive, you'll have to have a awkward tee that does not line up. So traffic is gonna be a four-way stop with odd angles to get traffic up there in the first place. And you're gonna be building up sides to the power line, the people over in Clark condition. Of no, no interest in annexation into the city. So you're gonna be putting commercial property up next to a donut hole. There's probably two to three owners and all the bad deal over there off the Road sixty eight and Cow Trail. That would be interested in annexing to the city, as they think they have commercial property. But the rest of those homeowners want a rural lifestyle that's gonna be another giant donut hole. Like we have out in the Riverview area, and commercial is just not gonna work. I appreciate what they decided on how to do that, but that. Concept is great in a large city, but not here, and I ask before you approve that. Drive out there and look at that piece of property, and you can see what I'm talking about. And you're gonna have a high school to the west of it, a strip of houses, maybe one road wide. And then a thirty acre commercial strip that makes no sense at all. That could be transferred over to sixty eight, where you got residential transition along sixty eight. And uh Burns Road on the east side and Phil Lane over there, or move it out towards. Uh Clark Road on sixty eight when that's developed. Thank you much for your time.
Thank you so much, Mr. Docstetter. Anyone else? Who wishes to speak?
Can you, can you hear me?
We can.
Oh, yes, this is Fred Oberding again. Um. Talking about specifically this piece of property of mine that was. Presently zoned commercial. You know, again, I invite, or I would take anyone there, any commissioner, any staff member, any. City employee out to this property and see what some of the problems are. You know, this piece of property. Is only two miles from the Walmart Lowe's. It's only about a mile from that. Uh mini mart, um the Maverick store. There's all kinds of commercial property. On Road sixty eight. In fact, one of the problems on Road sixty eight was that school bus starts, stops in front of that. Uh multiple ha- multiple housing, you gotta see the traffic getting backed up there, ten or twelve, thirty, forty cars. While these kids get on the main art trail on Rob's School Bus, that's not safe, that's just not good planning. And as I read the agenda for the program tonight, I was reviewing my comments. And one of the lines is, there is no trespassing signs, and they aren't going to go down a cow trail. Where there's at least two signs that say deaf children. It is not a cow trail. It's called cow, K A U trail, it's a paved road, but there are deaf signs on it. But it might as well be a cow trail, because that's about how many people go down there to shop, it's a bunch of cows and cowboys. Because. There's no visibility. There's no recognition out there. This is me and my little hay farm. And now there's gonna be a high school, and no commercial buyer is right mind is gonna put up. Piece of, invest in a piece of property, try to put in a business. He won't make it, he won't be able to compete. Again, I appreciate your time and your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Oberding. Did you wanna say anything, Mr. Gonzalez? Okay, uh do we have anyone else who'd like to speak at this time?
Yeah, there's one other thing I'd like to bring up, George Docstetter again. The latest information from the National Restaurant Association. Was twenty five percent of the restaurants in the United States will not reopen this year from the coronavirus. Cushman and Lakefield, one of the largest leasing companies in the United States. Figures after this leasing cycle is up, forty percent of the office space in the United States is gonna be vacant. We don't need more commercial when things have completely changed. With the way we're used to normally doing business in the past. You need to be looking to the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Alright, I'm not hearing anyone else who wishes to speak right now. Uh, Mr. Gonzalez, would you like to address us?
Yeah, absolutely. Uh appreciate the comments received from the public. Um again, there is gonna be an opportunity for us to refine this, so that by the time this is a final product. It is a uh final product that we can all be proud of, that works uh for the city Pasco for the next fifteen, twenty, and twenty-five years, et cetera. I I would like to mention, though, the i- the idea that um that the walkable. Community aspect doesn't work uh in the region, and you'll find that out actually in the next presentation, why it may not work. However. I will add that the Port Pasco just proposed and was approved a code amendment to do exactly just that along the waterfront. The Port of Kennewick and Economic Development Agency, as the Port of Pasco, is doing the exact same thing with millions of dollars in Kennewick. And we've seen increased density, walkable neighborhood development in central Richland, and so the idea that it doesn't work in our region. Uh may be shifting. Additionally, transit ridership isn't dependent on large city or not. One of the highest transit ridership levels is in Santa Fe, New Mexico. I don't believe that's a large city by any means, a little bit bigger than us, but Bend, Oregon also has significant uh transportation ridership as well. Again, just because it may not be the primary mode of transportation today, doesn't mean we shouldn't be planning to accommodate that in the future. As we've noted from the employment breakdown and household income in Pasco. A part of the problem may be we're not giving people an opportunity to actually do that in the first place, which I think presents some additional problems as well. Um the comprehensive plan should be comprehensive in nature, and so forward thinking is exactly the right approach. And look forward to addressing the comments received so far and those that we will continue to receive on the comprehensive plan. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Gonzalez. So um I actually see our recommendation is to continue. The public hearing until the next meeting. So do we need to move to continue it, or do I just say that we're continuing it? All I have to do is say that we are continuing this public hearing. And the public hearing will continue to the July sixteenth, twenty twenty. And the public hearing will continue to the July sixteenth, twenty twenty Planning Commission meeting. Thank you so much, everyone who has, who has commented tonight. I'm going to move on now to the next public hearing, which is regarding a code amendment. This is about street connectivity MF, uh, number CA twenty nineteen zero thirteen. And I, you might wanna science yourselves if you're out there, uh, in TV land. And Mr. Gonzalez?
Uh, good evening again, members of the Planning Commission. Uh, tonight's last item is on the street connectivity code amendment. Um, we've held, uh, three workshops on this, I think, beginning in December. Uh, I believe March and in, uh, May on this, um, on this item. So we look forward to talking about it a little bit more thoroughly with you today. Obviously, the objective is to meet established, again, I wanna emphasize established goals and policies uh, identified here in the City of Pasco. So the existing comprehensive plan, the bike pedestrian master plan approved in twenty eleven, the twenty eighteen complete streets policy, the Pasco City Council goals, and the currently in progress transportation system master plan that has long been identified as an emphasis for the current Pasco City Council. In order to identify and meet those objectives, it requires updates to the Pasco municipal code, specifically the streets and lots and blocks, uh, sections. So this is, uh, in, uh, this is a few scenarios, uh, the, that identify maximum block length and maximum block perimeter. Cul-de-sac, um, uh, lengths and the connection nation property shouldn't be too much of a, uh, it's actually not a big change. Our current cul-de-sac requirement is a minimum, is a maximum of three hundred feet. Um, and we do have throughout our comprehensive plan and municipal code, uh, a connection of existing roads to, uh, new roads. So those two really shouldn't be much of a new, uh, component. However, those two on the left definitely are. And while these might not be the kind of things that people think about when we talk about connectivity, transportation efficiency, multimodal opportunities, and walkability, block length and block perimeter are the two primary components of a walkable community or not. Our current maximum in Pasco is one thousand three hundred and twenty feet. And at the very bottom of this, you'll see that one thousand three hundred and twelve feet is the most commonly cited length for walkable distance standard for transit. So our current code is already far exceeding what international, national, regional, state guidance is on how far people are willing to walk to catch a frequent transit service. So, uh, a little bit about our existing conditions, this map is the census blocks in Pasco. Um, and they identify the average block perimeter. Um, I would, I would kind of throw, not throw away, I would ignore the higher areas specifically in northeast Pasco because that's definitely industrial. And a portion of that is DNR land, so that's, that's an outlier. And I would also, uh, to an extent, uh, that on the far left where, uh, one eighty-two, north and Broadmore, obviously, a lot of that is vacant. So we have nothing, but we don't have any infrastructure there. So I would throw, I would, I would put those to the side and take a look more about the distribution of what we have, uh, in traditional, I see myself on the screen. Um, uh, traditional Pasco, uh, which is the smaller block perimeters versus what we have in the West Pasco Riverview area. And then, uh, what's been identified north of the interstate, uh, which is again larger block perimeters. And I'll wait for the PowerPoint to come back on. Never seen myself on a big screen before, so I'm gonna tell my mom about this. Thank you, apologize for that. Um, again, uh, average block perimeter by census block in Pasco, you can see that, um, on the left side of the, of the table, you have the block perimeter, the average in feet, with the percent of population residing in those census blocks. And so obviously, very little of our population lives in a smaller block. Um, sixty-one percent live in that sixteen hundred to thirteen hundred foot range. Again, mostly that exceeding, uh, what most would consider walkable communities. And then about thirty-three percent in the even larger, thirty-two hundred and above. And then you start getting to higher, uh, again, uh, forty-nine hundred and above. But a, again, I think we would leave those alone for the purpose of this, uh, exercise. But this kind of shows a spatial distribution of where to expect a place that is easy to walk versus not. Pasco School District has a variety of schools in, uh, the City of Pasco. And what you see on your screen is the walk score for the neighborhood of each Pasco school here in the City of Pasco, obviously publicly funded, offering, I believe, eighteen thousand students or so enrollment, which, uh, was at the beginning of twenty nineteen. And you can see that Longfellow, Rowena Chess, and Stevens, Captain Gray, Emerson, Pasco High School, Robert Frost, all above that sixty percent, I'm sorry, sixty or higher walk score. Um, and then you see the national average of forty-eight. You see the City of Pasco and tri-cities actually have an average of thirty-six. And then the rest of these schools in the Pasco School District are located in areas that would be categorized um, as, uh, non-wa- as, as non-walkable, very auto-oriented development. The more auto-oriented you have, the more opportunity there are for collisions. Lots of students, lots of walking, obviously, that's a, that's an issue for us. Um, so you can see the breakdown, almost fifty-five percent of the students in the Pasco School District have a walk score below twenty-five. Sixty-five percent of students in the Pasco School District go to a school with a walk score below fifty. And if we look at the chart provided by walkscore.com, along with the OSPA data from the, uh, Washington State, um, you can see that, uh, below fifty is car-dependent, almost all errands or most errands. So to begin with, our block standards are not shifted or allowing for walking to really even occur in the first place. And that impacts obviously our students in the Pasco School District. So I mentioned the transportation system master plan in progress, but very early on in that effort, and I mean within the first month, they identified connectivity as a major issue in Pasco, specifically north of the interstate parts of Riverview. Although again, Riverview is always kind of identified separately because of the planning practices. And you can see Court Street between Road forty-four, one oh, Road one oh eight is identified as having, uh, constraints. Uh, Wernett Road, Chapel Hill Boulevard, between Road sixty-eight and Road one hundred, that road was just built. Santa Fe Parkway, relatively new road, Road forty-four experienced a lot more congestion, especially along, uh, where it meets with Argent with the stop sign, similar to Road thirty-six. We're having issues, obviously, Argent is a, uh, a road that I believe is up to forty-five miles an hour. You're seeing additional growth, you have a new hotel, the growth of Columbia Basin College. The Port of Pasco has more commercial, uh, efforts identified in that area. So I, I can, I expect to see more challenges identified where Road forty-four, Road thirty-six meet Argent and elsewhere. Um, again, Road one hundred and Road sixty-eight, here so one ninety-two, long been identified as challenges and constraints for, uh, all modes of transportation, specifically non-motorized. Uh, back to Ben Franklin Transit, this is a map of the public transportation benefit area. So, uh, the RCWs, uh, and BFT through those RCWs, uh, there's a, uh, a PTBA tax that each property owner pays into that to allow us, allow BFT to provide, uh, bus service. And as we've been seeing throughout all of tonight's presentations, we're not really using those resources as best as we can. We're planning in the opposite direction of a publicly funded agency. Uh, so, um, what you see obviously is Pasco and the rest of the tri-cities. Uh, the PTBA tells us that comprehensive planning for public transportation is a requirement within the urban growth area provided by Ben Franklin Transit. So for us to be supportive and collaborative with Ben Franklin Transit, it is more than just handing out bus passes in the summer. We actually have to look at our development pattern and see whether people would like to drive or not. Do we give them an opportunity for that in the first place? Here is a map from the Center of Neighborhood Technologies that measures the transportation connectivity index. It's a, uh, index that measures the walkable distance along, uh, transit routes based on the block size and development pattern. And this is zero through one hundred. And this again is the entire tri-cities area, although you see Pasco highlighted in that purple boundary. Very few places in the entire tri-cities score above a five. So when we go back to why only one percent of folks utilize public transportation, uh, regardless of where the employment might be located, it could also very well be the impact of not developing with transit or those not a mind, non-motorized users in mind in the very first place. So I wanted to provide a few examples of a block length and block perimeter means and how that looks like in our existing neighborhoods. Block perimeter is the length around an entire full block. Block length is the length of a block. Lots should be the, obviously with the two tiers of units. So length is that length of, of what it takes. So this is a portion of Pasco, uh, west of Road sixty-eight between Road one hundred. And you can see that, uh, you have block perimeters exceeding two thousand feet, one almost at three thousand feet, uh, block lengths of eleven hundred feet. You have smaller block lengths at five hundred and thirty-eight, but then with sixteen hundred foot perimeters and lengths again at six thirty, perimeters fifteen ninety, fifteen ninety. Let's take a look at a different part of the city. Slightly different, this is more towards, uh, Burton, north of Burton and south of Burton, uh, east of Road sixty-eight. Again, block perimeter is at twenty-six hundred feet, block lengths of one thousand feet. If remember that number earlier in the presentation, one thousand, uh, three hundred and twelve is the, uh, but the average distances, uh, that, uh, but, uh, Federal Transit Administration and Transit Planner is used for what community members are willing to walk to receive, uh, transit services. Block perimeter is at twenty-six hundred feet, block lengths of a thousand feet. Keep in mind, from home plate to center field and baseball fields is four hundred and five feet. So you're forcing folks to walk to baseball fields to get to the next block. In some places, that's appropriate, but when the entire city is developed that way, you end up with an extreme auto-oriented development pattern, which has significant impacts, health, cost, congestion. Another example, this is more, uh, a little bit west of where we're at today, a little bit in central Pasco. Still have, you know, twenty-six hundred, uh, foot block lengths, I'm sorry, block perimeters, six hundred and sixty foot block lengths. Little bit more in mind of what you'd see in most traditional American cities. This is kind of the standard block development pattern. And while there's definitely an emphasis on ensuring that roads connect with each other, obviously with public facilities and, uh, parks and trails and just the natural topography, uh, not all roads, uh, should connect with each other. You don't wanna force traffic onto places that don't need to have it. But again, you can see the shift in development pattern from what we've seen. If you remember that map we showed in the comprehensive planning presentation, where all the residential housing units been built by decade, you can see new development, newer, older development, depending on what you consider old, and then traditional central Pasco. So what would these scenarios that we've been proposing mean for Pasco? Um, this is illustrative only, um, in its estimates. But what you see are four different development patterns based on block perimeter and block length. These are not exact, so those that you see with eight hundred foot block length, does it mean that that's an eight hundred foot block, uh, length, uh, square or rectangle? It means that it would fit within that scenario. And so you can see you have a little bit more smaller refined with the, what's been proposed, the Transportation System Master Plan. That is a block standard that is traditional across most of American cities. Um, slightly, slightly larger with the six sixty to seventeen sixty block perimeter and then an escalating cost, right? So you see that each block template identifies how they may be applied. Keep in mind, these are maximums only. We have had discussion with our city engineer and public works to identify perhaps block minimums specifically on arterials. Um, I think, uh, two hundred, three hundred foot block lengths work in central business districts in major cities or downtown Pasco. Uh, that is a fact, we don't necessarily want two hundred foot block lengths everywhere. And so we may be applying another set of standards to ensure that we have proper facilitation of transportation as well along our arterials. Um, and again, I wanna emphasize, the purpose of this is to create walkable communities, but all roads will be designed to follow topography, natural elements. Um, I never thought I would use Phoenix, Arizona as an example. But if you take an overview map of Phoenix, they've developed on a relatively connected pattern. But when you zoom in and look at the subdivision by subdivision level, you see plenty of connectivity and options for folks to get around via any mode. Um, however, there's still a lot of creativity that's taking place. And I think that is something that Pasco would benefit from in terms of the, uh, ensuring that connectivity is in place. And then next in line, making sure that developments are still allowed, the creativity to do what they want to do. That's not in, uh, we're not trying to overburden anybody here. We're trying to make sure that what we get left in terms of a transportation system is one that we can be proud of and maintain efficiently. So I wanted to throw these in with a sense of scale. Now, these are all taken at different, uh, the image on the left is taken at a different, uh, elevation, obviously than those on the right, but you can kind of tell the difference. Giza Stadium to walk around it is twenty-two hundred and seventy feet. Walmart, twenty-three hundred and twenty feet. And to walk around what you see, the stadium sitting at Edgar Brown Stadium is twenty-five hundred feet. And I don't believe anybody would consider any of that walkable, especially when you consider age, disability, wheelchair, uh, whatever it may be. Um, that is simply not an appropriate development pattern to have for an entire city as diverse as ours. So community input, obviously an important component of anything we do here at the City of Pasco. This is from the Benton Franklin Council of Governments, they conducted a survey for their long-range regional transportation plan. This is a plan that our comprehensive plan must be in compliance with. So we take a lot of guidance from this document and the planning process there. On the left side, you can see where, uh, uh, people across, this is regional, uh, where they wanted investments to occur. And then on the right side, you see their concerns, pedestrian safety, lack of sidewalks, sprawl, rapid growth, bicycle lanes, lack of transit. And I'd like to say it's not maybe the lack of transit, but maybe the fact that transit doesn't even have an opportunity to operate as they, as they should. Um, the lack of sidewalks, the Planning Commission and Pasco City Council addressed that code actually, uh, not too long ago here, uh, where there was a, uh, sort of an empty piece missing in one of our development standards that did not require sidewalks. I don't believe any of us would want, um, anybody in a wheelchair or in a stroller pushing somebody on a gravel, on a gravel, uh, whatever it may be. So this shows regional concerns. And now we go a little bit more local. This is twenty eighteen's results of the City Pasco's National Citizen Survey. And I think it's important for us to take a look at these surveys. Little bit of caution, obviously, because of the statistical reliability of them. But obviously, this is what the city pays to have done, so we can measure how we are performing in terms of what the community wants from us. And that green line is fifty percent. So recent development is slightly higher than a fifty percent positive rating. So almost half of the responses indicated that they were not necessarily positive about recent development. The built environment, which, uh, we identified in the comprehensive plan presentation, is significantly impacted by urban form, the development pattern, et cetera. Walking, again, just slightly over fifty percent. Paths and walking trails, um, we don't have a lot, but those that we do have in Pasco are great. And I think as we move forward with the, uh, Transportation System Master Plan and Comprehensive Plan, along with park, uh, and facility planning, I think it would be a benefit for us to begin to identify how we can begin to link our schools and parks to our river, our river, et cetera, so that we can eventually have a pathway that's connected to more than just the pathway itself. These are results, this is still in progress. I think we've had about two hundred and seven responses so far. It's still open on the Transportation System Master Plan survey. But these are the results so far. And so on the top line, you see, uh, a percent of agreement. And on the bottom, a percent of disagreement. On the left, you see, I can easily walk to most destinations in my neighborhood. And on the right, you see crosswalks are provided wherever I want to across the street. None of these meet twenty-five percent. These are, uh, again, results of the survey still in, in progress of where residents have identified where they believe sidewalk constraints are, are a challenge for them. And I shouldn't be surprised to see roads succeed on there specifically along the interstate. But you can see some pattern, uh, the Lakeview development there in East Pasco is long suffer from no, uh, appropriate access to A Street. We have dots there. Um, it'll be, uh, uh, a project for us in the future to identify how we can make that connection. You see Burns Road located up to the Project for us in the future to identify how we can make that connection. You see Burns Road located up to the north. Um you have two new schools going up there and we'll focus on that in a slide later on. And a few others uh sporadic pad uh sidewalk constraints identified on this map. Again, still in progress. These are the crossing constraints and they sort of mimic. What we see on the sidewalks, I shouldn't be surprised either, but a lot near CBC, a lot near the airport, a lot again on Road sixty-eight. Quite a bit on Sandifer and Burton Boulevard, separated sidewalk. Still a lot of residents believe there's some constraints there and it's important for us to dive in and understand why. So the impacts of walkability to real estate. Um I do wanna ensure that this wasn't done in the top. Uh ten biggest cities in the US. This was a national survey conducted by Moody's Analytics. And uh there is a place for highly walkable central business districts, obviously Pasco's not in that category, but there was an increase. In the walkability of a neighborhood, specifically commercial developments and the property values. Uh there is a correlation between increased walkability and price appreciation. You can see that. In the highly walkable suburban areas, there was a notable increase and then you. Further you go down from somewhat walkable to car-dependent suburb, the increases decrease. Suburban properties themselves increased forty-three percent. And there was a study that indicated a ten-point increase in walk score was associated with a five to eight percent increase in commercial value. And we go back to the walk score values we had with the school district, um all public data. But again, if our neighborhoods are more walkable, what are the economic impacts of having more walkable communities? Here's a little bit more information on uh the residential side uh from the National Association of Realtors. So the real estate, seventy-six percent indicate walkability as a deciding factor or where they want to live today. Eighty percent walkable communities as an important attribute for quality of life. Quality of life is something that's indicated. Throughout uh I believe in city staff's email signatures as indicated by city council. Sixty-three percent prefer to live in a place where they do not need a car. To use very often. That's from the Urban Lasts Institute's American. Uh Housing, Transportation and Community Survey, and I think a a good quote from the chief economist from the National Association of Realtors. Walkable communities attract tourists, reduce commuting costs and emissions and facilitate good health, bringing in more value to a neighborhood. Pasco City Council goals, they are here uh laminated in City Hall. There are also, I believe, in most conference rooms here. Um ongoing efforts to improve efficiency and effectiveness in the use of public resources in the delivery of municipal services. Programs and long-term maintenance and viability of public facilities. And the undertaking of a comprehensive and inclusive transportation planning and analysis process to include facilitation of traffic flow. Support the integration of pedestrian, bicycle and other non-vehicle means of transportation. So what we've determined already is that what has been developed in Pasco may not be the best suited for meeting these Pasco City Council goals. Or the adopted plans. Um and I think we can see um. Uh the potential consequences of that on this screen. What you see highlighted in purple is just north of Burns Road. Just to the east of Broadmoor Boulevard. The UGA would obviously take place north of here. You have brand-new schools, publicly funded schools by the Pasco School District, and there is only three ways to get there. Between Road ninety and Broadmoor Boulevard, which is already somewhat congested, but will be in the future. And uh a little bit further east on Road uh eighty-four, and then before Road eighty-four, I believe you have to go to Road sixty-eight. No sidewalks, no pathways. It's now a project in the Transportation Improvement Plan. But how can we facilitate safe uh walking environments? For students to get to school in the first place if we make it difficult for them to even cross the street. So this is what happens when we're not able to really enforce as much of the development pattern that uh. Would foster more walkable, especially safe uh modes of transportation. Again, for all users in the city of Pasco. And this is a potential consequence of it because w- we cannot go back and redo what's been developed. It's done. So in order for us to appropriately develop the urban growth area. I believe uh we will have to make some necessary changes that are identified in this proposed code. Obviously, the Washington State Department of Transportation Commerce will play very close attention to see if. What we're saying we're going to do is actually being implemented in the municipal code standards. Support and collaboration. I think we should be very proud about this. We have letters of support from the Washington State Department of Transportation. The Benton Franklin Council of Governments, Ben Franklin Transit, Visit Tri-Cities. And the city of Pasco's Fire Department, because if it's hard to walk and drive in a neighborhood, it's probably difficult to respond to a fire in a neighborhood. And I listed these almost Pasco, obviously because they had a tremendous community input, well over five hundred responses when they went through their process. A few years ago, again, that indicated more walkable, at least an opportunity for that to occur. And so again, what staff believes we are doing is implementing the goals and policies long established by city council. And what the public is telling us that they want. So the next steps, obviously, continued refinement. I mentioned the idea of some uh minimum. Uh along some of our arterials, we'll obviously welcome comments, questions and feedback from the Planning Commission and members of the public. Please take the survey online. It's obviously, as you see here, is gonna feed directly into what we do here. At staff, and then we look forward to coming back to the Planning Commission with a public hearing on July sixteenth. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Gonzalez. The recommendation is that we accept public comments on the proposed. Code amendment and continue the public hearing until July sixteenth. I am going to guess that there are no comments or questions from my fellow. Commission members, commissioners. Not hearing any? We can, we can move on. Thank you very much. There, oh, there's a comment? Okay, well, I'm not hearing anything. Oh, Mister Stromstedt. Forgive me, would you like to s- would you like to uh? Offer public comments, forgive me.
Yep, I'm here. This is Caleb Stromstedt. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, thank you for giving me the opportunity to comment. Um we decided to stick around and we've been following the street connectivity um. Proposed amendments and definitely excited to be engaged at the beginning of this, so we can hopefully come to a good end state here. Um you know, walkable communities is something that we all want, you know, we live in the city of Pasco and. The one thing that I've observed is that when people walk predominantly in in Pasco, they're they're not walking to a destination, they're walking to walk to get exercise. And so I think providing additional walkable paths subdivisions, um I think is a great idea. Exist in the, they're existing built out. Um if there are some more access points to Sanford to get to that corridor, I think that would have been a a a good, a good thing. I think Jacob brought up that slide you showed, um you could go back to it that showed the future school north of Burns Road. Yeah, that one right there. So that's a great example. Um. If 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 there had been some foresight and planning to to at the minimum provide some side yard walkable pass. That would allow people to walk and and cross Burns Road or at least access the uh the future sidewalks that will be there. Um when that's fully developed, would have been a great idea. Um but. From my opinion and my my stance as a resident of Pasco and what what I would like to see is. Walkable communities and 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 that doesn't require the block length reduction. Um like was originally proposed because there's there's unintended consequences when you start adding development costs. To to um to what you're doing and 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 adding additional streets and utilities. And lighting and crossings, they 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 bring their their own host of problems, and so that's. I don't think that's a a significant factor, and I would I would definitely petition the Planning Commission to consider that. Um those, the city of residential. Probably one of the first slides where you have the green blocks kinda highlighted. Um but that's a, that's a residential community. When people move there, they know where they're moving. Um if they're walking, they're walking to get exercise or they're walking to their neighbor's house, they're not walking to to work. Um and so we just need to remember, I think it would be helpful to find the problem a little better. Because it seems we we keep transitioning into this urban mindset, like we're in downtown Seattle and we have this. Mass group of people and we, we we wanna be able to commute because it's hard to commute. You know, it's easier for people to walk. We don't have that here in Pasco. People drive. Um and when they walk, they walk for exercise predominantly. And again, like we talked about before, I mean, our existing commercial corridor on Road sixty-eight is proof of that, like. Are we seeing a mass amount of pedestrian traffic walking to work? Um I believe the answer would be no. Um and I'd also like, it would be helpful to on the statistics, if we can get some kind of reference points, cause statistics without reference points are. Um they're kinda hard to 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 believe, at least the if they're applicable. Um specifically the transit block length stats. So I mean, does that, those those averages that the the National Transit, the the Association says that. Those are the blocks is, does that include urban scale? Because that would significantly skew that statistic of what an average block length is, and we shouldn't base our city standards. On skewed statistics like that if that was the case, but we don't know, cause we don't have reference points, so if those could be provided, that'd be helpful. Um another comment on curb gutter and sidewalk, the pathways are great. Um but curb gutter and sidewalk's not the only option, and curb gutter sidewalk also presents other challenges, cause it adds additional costs. The development, and I personally work on a number of infill developments in the city, a little five-acre infill developments. They're becoming harder and harder and harder to develop. It just turns out. Um and a primary reason for that is because the increased development standards. Curb gutter sidewalks and lighting is significant in that, and especially when they're big, when they're infill. And they used to be county, and so they're just kind of this pocket. Um with curb gutter sidewalk and there's no sidewalk for a mile or more. And we had a a recent development, Road fifty-six and Sylvester that we're doing, and we brought that up. Uh that, you know, we asked for an exemption to put curb gutter and sidewalk because there's, there's no sidewalk within a mile, and the response we got was. Um the city needs sidewalk, and we hope this encourages the neighbors to develop sidewalks. Well, that doesn't make any sense. Nobody's gonna spend money, their own money to put a sidewalk in front of their house, and if that's the way that. That that City Hall is thinking, we need to just get a little reality check and into how development works and make sure that we're considering. Everything so we can get this walkable community um in the most effective manner. Um I know this is an ongoing subject, so I'm really trying to throw out some questions there for everybody to to think about and. Another one on the community input slide, uh it, those percentages were helpful, but it'd also be helpful to know how many people were. What that sample size was, is that twenty people, a hundred people? And that would be helpful, so. Those are my comments. Thanks for listening and look forward to to hearing more, more options and. And I don't know if it's appropriate, but Jake, we'd like to have some discussions. We can submit some more specific things for the next item. We'd be happy to do so. Um be on the agenda.
Thank you so much, Mister Stromstedt. Uh, any reactions or?
No, no good reactions. I just, uh please submit comments. Uh we'll be happy to work through this. So again. Like everything else, we end up with a product that works for the entire city of Pasco. Thank you.
Thank you. Um and I think we said, weren't, weren't there two hundred people who participated thus far?
I uh so in the National Citizen Survey, I believe there was, I I know in the Master Plan Survey, over two hundred, it's still ongoing. And I believe in the Citizen Survey, it was over two hundred and I can um, I can, that data is available, it's public information, so.
Great. Thank you so much. Any other comments? From the line?
This is Commissioner Campos.
Oh, Commissioner A. Campos, please.
Yeah, I just wanna say, just uh the example you guys showed on there, I actually live in that vicinity. Um and yeah, it's it's a real nightmare at times, whether it's walking for exercise or just even trying to just get through the neighborhood itself. Uh one of my biggest concerns is, yeah, when the schools go up there and they already are, um just the the street connectivity on that. Um so I'm I'm looking to to see how we could fix that and. Uh leaning obviously towards scenario one or two, but I appreciate what the city has presented. Um I look forward to working on that.
Thank you so much. Anyone else? All right, so uh again, the recommendation is that we keep the public hearing open. Um to our next meeting on July sixteenth. We will proceed with that, and I believe that that closes our public hearings. We now move to workshop on on our uh agenda. We have other business. Uh the first item is the twenty-twenty. Amer- Association of Washington Cities Municipal Excellence Award. Mister White.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I know um we've been at this a long time tonight, but uh what I wanted to do was for the commission. And for anybody still left watching or listening. Um the city received an AWC, Association of Washington Cities Municipal Excellence Award for the Race and Equity category. For a project that was um. Initiated in the Community and Economic Development Department through a receipt of a couple of state, where one state and one federal grant. However, it was spearheaded by our Planning Commission Chair, Tanya Bowers. So uh Tanya spearheaded the project, including the interview portion. Um conducted or at least directed and or conducted, and she can speak to this. Uh the research component, and um I'm gonna say. Emcee the the, at least two open houses associated with the uh. Collection of the oral history for um the African-American experience in Pasco. Um that was part of the match for the grants that the city then turned into a video production. Uh doc- document that is available on our website, and I would encourage anybody to uh please view that. Um the uh interviews were most interesting and enjoyable. They were um. That would, well, they painted a very vivid picture of what it was like to live on the, let's say, the wrong side of the tracks. Uh during the uh early Hanford years of of the Hanford area development. So I wanted to recognize that Tanya's efforts in uh that project and um. Appreciation and uh offer her the chance, of course, she's the chair, to uh say a few words if she wishes.
Well, thank you very much, Mister White, and um I remember. Gosh, I feel like it was four years ago when I first called you up and said, huh. It sounds like there's a really great story here. Um and uh we were trying to look at what the capacity of um. Of staff and the Historic Preservation Commission was. Um at first we took a. A pass on applying for a federal grant. Um but then the the match changed for that, so we came back. And ended up applying, uh ended up being successful for that and also for the state grant. Um and I have to say, all of this happened because um. Of a community organization access, African-American Community Cultural and Educational Society. They, this was their story, and they began the work of documenting the contributions and the experiences. Of African-Americans who lived on the east side of town. So I really would like to uh thank you for the acknowledgement and the appreciation, but. I also wanna appreciate these individuals and others um. In the larger community who shared their stories with us and their experiences. Um cause we wouldn't have been able to do it if it hadn't have been for them. And um give a shout out also to Lori Larson, who volunteered her services in. Filming the video that we put together, and uh we've got at least the survey done. The state survey done, thanks to the consultant who came in, and um we're still working on the. Federal underrepresented communities. Uh grant, which will end up producing some nominations to the uh National Register. Of Historic Places, so that's pretty exciting um that we. Of historic places, so that's pretty exciting um that we realize. The importance, the significance of of that particular community population. Um. With its connection to the Hanford site, one of the Manhattan Project National Historical Parks. Uh sites and uh it was a, it was a great pleasure. Wow, I think I've got my second win now, it nearly ten o'clock. On a Thursday, I am so proud of us for starting at uh six o'clock today. If we'd started seven, this would have been even uglier than it is right now. And um with that, are there any other comments or questions? About anything? Seeing none, I will take this opportunity to adjourn. You don't see any, Rick? All right, with that, I will take that, the opportunity to adjourn our. Uh planning commission meeting for the evening and we will see you all in a month.